Testifying to the comments, but she wants to testify. She has to leave before nine o'clock, so every good PM.
And if anything, we'll just take her out of order.
Yeah, there you go.
All right, gentlemen, let's light this candle. How you feeling?
All right.
Good, good. All right.
We lit the candle already. You're late.
Exactly.
Oh, hey, everyone. Guess what I have to sell?
Ah, very good.
How many do you want?
All right, is everybody ready?
I have three, right?
All right.
Trying to keep it organized since we have four public hearings, right?
Okay, yes.
So this is in person. These are the people that signed up here, this line to this line. One person removed signed up. And then this is a written comment that's emailed to council. This is all for general. And these are the public hearings. We only have Sally McLean for the half. Nobody, nobody, sadly, nobody. And then the ordinance is we have no paper for all of them. Okay? And then all the pink sheets.
In person?
In person.
These are all in person?
Yep, in person. And they all have pink sheets. And this pink sheet is what is official, the Tony person.
Right.
They're all in person. And then if anybody gives anything after, just put it on the call.
What's this? Public hearing. All right.
I just have one question. It says May 7 through May 13. No one last night?
Oh, yeah, yeah. And he said, I made sure that that's what we were doing.
Okay.
Yes.
I'm glad, I'm glad it was yours.
And I'm glad.
All right, everybody ready? All right, let's do it. Good evening and welcome to the Federway City Council meeting for May 16th of 2023. Would you all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, welcome, everybody. It's great to see everybody with such a good turnout, especially on such a beautiful day. We've had some unseasonably warm weather. I'd actually like to thank the folks and John Hutton and his crew over at the community center for having our cooling center available for the public, for those folks that need to get out of the heat. And it can get pretty hot very quickly, as we know. And so we've got to make sure we take extra steps to make sure we're not leaving our pets inside our vehicles, or if we have to for a second, make sure we, you know, roll down our windows. We just need to be very mindful of just how quickly it can get hot. Actually, I saw a report on the news about classrooms around the state getting unseasonably warm as well. So that's something that people are paying a lot of attention to. So anyway, everyone just be safe. And I want to say thank you, John, for suggesting that once again and being ready to get out there. And David Solano getting the word out on our social media outlets as well. Okay, so recent community events and emerging issues. So we had the I'm Hooked on Fishing Outdoor Experience at Steel Lake. That was on May 6th. That was at Steel Lake. Great event. Senior Health and Resources Fair was on 5/11. That was, I believe, it was last Friday, right? Yes, Thursday. That's Thursday. What a great event. And I'll have, obviously, the council members, the senior commission was involved in that. I saw the deputy mayor there and very involved with the commission. Our senior commission did a phenomenal job, and it was packed all day. But I'll say no more and let you give a report on that. The room was full and a lot of booths at the Performing Arts and Events Center and a lot of folks coming through. We had opening day of the farmer's market the next day on May 13th. And like I said, that's always a great place to, I always kind of plan Mother's Day around the opening of the market. And they had two great flower places, so I had to go check out both places. Got some fresh vegetables. So now, the market has been sort of moving around a bit. Market is really one of the great institutions of our community. As I always like to say, you know, we live in a city of 100,000 people, and I went to high school out in Yelm, and it was a small town, and the largest town, and the largest building in town was the water tower. But it's events and institutions like the farmer's market that make Federway sometimes seem like a small town in the best sense of the word, because it really shrinks up. We're able to see our neighbors and get some fresh vegetables. And Rose and David and Carla do such a tremendous job. And it's great to see so many of my colleagues there. And so it was a great opening event, and we got our new poster, which is now hung on the wall. So it's every Saturday, and actually, they've got Cisco, Ooh La La. He's going to be there. Sorry, I'm doing impressions. But the gardener from King Five, Cisco, is going to be there, I think, 11:00 AM this Saturday.
Cisco Morris.
Cisco Morris, that's it.
Saturday.
Saturday, the 20th.
Yeah.
Okay, I feel strongly about that. Okay. So Saturday, 11:00 AM, be there. We've got a busy day on Saturday. So what we've got is, we've got that at 11:00 at the market. Market opens at 8:30, 9?
Nine o'clock.
Nine o'clock. So that opens at nine. It's great, you know, with all the stuff I just talked about. And then we've got the Cisco Morris, who's going to be there at 11:00. But exactly at 11:00 is when Touch a Truck begins. Now, Touch a Truck is going to be going over at Wild Waves. We can't use the PAC TC3 parking lot, because we're going to be knocking down the old Target building. So they have, they're going to have it over at Wild Waves. That's between 11:00 and 2:00?
Right.
All right, I got some of the stuff logged away. So that's really fun for the kids, and, you know, they've got all kinds of just great vehicles and with the fire department. Bill, do not let me get in the hydroplane again. It took a team of people to extricate me the last time I got in. But it's a great, it's a great thing for people to see, and especially for the kids. They love it. And then we've got, after that, Master Nau is having, at noon, Master Nau is having the Mayor's Cup at Taekwondo. That's at Decatur High School. That's at noon. And simultaneously to that, we're having the Marine Hills Parade. Jack, how many years is that now?
60.
60 years. Amazing.
There's a 50. I think it's 60.
The Chamber of Commerce, this is their 70th anniversary as a Chamber of Commerce. Marine Hills celebrating its 60th year of doing the parade. That starts at 293rd and 7th. That's where they start, and then they're going to be over by the pool, where we cut the ribbon and they ceremoniously open the pool. That's always fun. And then, let's see, what else? And then we've got the Multi Service Center. It's always been called the Crab Feed before, but now it's called the Spring Into Action Dinner and Auction, Saturday night, at the Hyatt Regency at Lake Washington in Renton, which is a beautiful facility. And Multi Service Center does so many great things in our community, from literacy, education, job placement, low-income energy assistance, you know, especially the food bank. Multi Service Center is really one of the beacons of light and the pillars of our community. So we want to support them as much as we absolutely can. Our own King County Councilman, Pete Von Reichbauer, is hosting a South King County Athlete Fund Breakfast on Saturday, June 3rd. It's at Emerald Downs. Jerry DePoto, sort of the Billy Bean of anybody who watched Moneyball and his baseball, we're all experts in baseball when the Mariners are going well, right? But if you're a fan of Moneyball, that whole movie was sort of based on a guy named Billy Bean, a protege of him. And John, don't, let's not get into the whole thing that the Angels initially fired him. Jerry DePoto, the general manager with the Mariners, is going to be there at this breakfast, raising money for kids. And DePoto's doing great with the Mariners, by the way. So that's going to be a fun event. And thanks to Pete for doing that, to make sure that we've got, you know, funds for our local athletics. Federway Arts Exposition Gallery on Saturday, June 3rd, at the Performing Arts and Events Center. Oh, and Bill, were you going, oh, you got, I forgot I had pictures. Has this been up? All right. See, I missed a meeting and I forgot we actually, anyway. Very good. Those are some of the pictures. The picture right there, the top left picture, is what we had a luncheon last week. The individual to the right in that picture is the author of a book about homelessness. That was actually last week at a Fusion event that's at the Twin Lakes Country Club. David Harrison with Fusion is there in the picture. I'm the short guy in between. And it was a really interesting breakfast. We actually ordered eight copies of the book when we got done, and five for the council, three for our staff. Many of the council members were there, and it's really about addressing homelessness from really quantifiable metrics. Let's see here, what did I miss? Oh, okay. So we've got Pride Month. We're going to raise the flag on Thursday, June 1st, here at City Hall. Be here at 9:00 AM. The pride flag's going to go up. We'll not only have the pride flag out in front on this flagpole, but we'll have the four, the two by the big flagpole on 3/20th for that month as well. Then, let's see, what else? Oh, Juneteenth Flag Raising on Friday, June 16th. Monday, the 19th, is the actual state holiday, but on Friday, June 16th, at noon here at City Hall, we will raise the Juneteenth flag. And so put that on your calendars. Love to have you there. We'll have a great program. And Bill and our diversity commission and many folks in the community are working on that, to make sure that's a very special event. I think it's going to be the third year we've done it? Third or fourth, third year. And that's always a great event. Okay, so those are the Mayor's Emerging Issues and Report. Oh, the picture in the middle at the top was the senior commission members at the senior health event. Yeah, thank you. I take Susan everywhere, because she helps. And, exactly. Thank you, thank you, Deputy Mayor. And then to the right is the poster we received at the farmer's market. So, and I got my flowers, so that's the most important thing. All right, I hope everybody had a great Mother's Day, by the way. It was a really special day in our family, so it was really, it was a great event. Okay, those are the emerging issues and report from my end, and the council members, when they give their reports, could talk about, obviously, many of those events as well. Now, for the most important part of the evening, public comment. Remember, you've got three minutes. We asked, the council asked, that you just state the community you live in. We don't need your address. And green means go, yellow means 30 seconds, red means please stop. I hate to interrupt people, and we all know the rules. So, and if you, if you put on your pink sheet that you're speaking for five people that are present, you get the full five minutes. Okay, I think I recited the rules, so we all know them. Let's go ahead and get started. I will, I'll call out a couple of names and sort of queue up, so we can go through these efficiently. Okay, so the first few is, we've got, let's see, is that signed up? We've got Mohammed Said, MD. Now, that's signed up online. Is Dr. Said here? Dr. Said?
It's okay.
Okay, well, I'm going to put that aside. I'm going to see if the doctor's here later. And I promise I won't say it's the doctor in the house, even though I just did. Can't help myself. All right, so Ann Michelle Hart, and then followed by Karen Brigado, and then Susan Strong, Jan Barber, Ann Blevins, Debbie Harvey. All right, Ann Michelle.
No relation. We're not related. I don't know who the other person, anyway, hi, I'm Ann Michelle Hart from the Federway Public Market, and I wanted to start by saying that, well, I'm from Federway for about decades. I wanted to say thank you to the city council. We appreciate the support that you've shown us over the last couple of months. We are moving forward. We kind of feel like we're taking little baby steps. We're ready to run, but we're getting held back a little bit. We wanted to give an update for you, and Mayor, thank you very much for telling everybody that we are a small town, even though we are large in quantity. We, as the public market, want to foster that hometown feel and that small community. That's something that we had when we were much smaller, but it's still there underneath somewhere, and we want to make sure it grows, and people understand that they are welcome here and that they have a home here. We did hire Grant Rider over the last couple of months. We've been, I think, four or five grants in. We're waiting for information back on those. It really helps to be able to tell the grants that we're applying for that we have support from our city and that they are planning to put a public market up on the plaza. So I do appreciate the plans that you have set forth with the developer, trying to get a market up in that space. We have been, as a board, going out to the different commissions and introducing ourselves. So if you've seen us, hi, we're out and talking to you about what we're planning to do. We are at a point where we're looking for more help. We are a small but mighty six-team. It's a heavy lift. We know there are more people, and I'm just going to use the James Holthower, if you've been watching Jeopardy, we are all in on Federway and the public market. We're looking for other people that want to be all in with us. We are so excited about the plans. I can't even describe everything we have in our brains, but it requires the public to tell us if our ideas work for you. And in doing that, I would advise you to contact any one of our board members. You can find us on Facebook page under Federway Public Market PM. You can find us on Nextdoor, and our website is fedwaypm.org. Come find us, we'd love to have you. Oh, and just to let you know, free fries on Friday, June 16th, at Billy McHale's. Come out, answer, ask some questions of us, answer. We'll give you all kinds of information. You can decide if you like our crazy band of people, and if our idea of a public market matches your idea of a public market. Thank you very much.
Could you say when the free fries are again?
Yeah, June 16th, Billy McHale's, from 6:00 to 9:00.
All right. Pam, that needs to go on the calendar. All right. Okay, Karen, thank you, Pam. Karen Brigado, thank you, Ann Michelle.
Good evening, Mayor Farrell, President Linda Kochmar, Deputy Mayor Susan Honda, and council members. I'm Karen Brigado, I'm a 30-year resident, and I am from the Federway Arts Commission. I want to thank you, City Council, for funding the Arts Commission's new ever, first-ever arts explosion arts festival that's coming up at the PAEC. It'll be June 2nd, 3rd, and 4th for the public. We received such an overwhelming support, not just from you, but from sponsors and from artists themselves. About a year ago, we planned for about 40 artists to come. The first weekend in June, we will welcome 70 artists to come, and over 130 pieces of art. Now, I don't know where they're all going to be, but the Parks Commission assures me that they've got everything in tow. Art is coming from here, Oregon, even several pieces from back east. It is really a very cultural event as well. We have sponsors from El Centro de la Raza. We have sponsorship from the Korean-American Artists Association. We even have a sponsor from Jurassic Art Inc Tattoo Studio, which shows you that we're really quite, whoops, sorry, I did something. I don't know how to get it off. There we go. I welcome all of you behind the dais to an invitation-only event. It's on June 2nd. This is an event, of course, it's a juried arts competition. It will be adjudicated, and thank you, Mayor, for RSVPing to be there on June 2nd, where you will give out prizes. The real festival begins for the public and everybody out there on June 3rd, 10:00 to 6:00. It's open to the public. Please come see the artwork. You'll also enjoy food trucks, there's kids' artwork, there's sidewalk chalk, there's musical interludes throughout the day from assorted amazing group of people. We start out with an American Barbershop Quartet. There's a Ukrainian National Anthem sung by a vocalist. There's Latina torch singers, there's a country singer with his guitar, everything you could imagine. It ends with the Federway Youth Symphony Orchestra, that is soon to tour Korea next month, that will be bringing K-pop and some other interesting music. And we also have a Ukrainian and Latvian choir that will be flashmobbing us as well. It will be a great event. And also, I want to thank you for the ARPA money invested to bring this event. This is a cultural weekend for Federway, and the Arts Commission has many, many more ideas for Federway. We would love funding to be able to put some of these ideas to use. So I thank you again.
Thank you.
And I'll see you on the second.
All right, thank you.
Thanks.
All right, Susan Strong.
Mayor Farrell, Deputy Mayor Honda, Council President Kochmar, and council members. I'm Susan Strong, and I live in Federway since 1975. My focus is on the need we have for drug and alcohol rehabilitation facilities, as well as mental health facilities for the severely impaired. I urge you to pass Council Bill Number 847 regarding misdemeanor possession of controlled substances. We do not need to have people possessing, selling, or using illegal drugs on the streets of Federway. We do not need that. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Jan Barber.
Hi, good evening, Mayor Farrell, Deputy, and everyone else. My name is Jan Barber. I'm a member of the Federway Lions, and I've been, I've been living in Federway for more than 15 years, and this is my friend Carolyn. We wanted to sing something and then remind you about how wonderful Make Music is going to be this year. So we have something very brief. We wanted to sing. Bill Staines recently passed away, but he was a folk singer, and he wrote a song called "River." I was born in the path of the winter wind, raced where the mountains are old. Their springtime waters came dancing down. I remember the tales they told, the whistling ways of my younger days, too swiftly have painted on by. But all of their memories they linger on, like the light in the fading sky. River, take me along with your sunshine, sing me your song, ever moving and wandering and free. You're old and old river, you're changing old river, let you and me, river, run down to the sea. This is just to remind you that the Federway Lions will be producing and helping with Make Music Federway. We have several pop-up performances on June 21st, including Curves, Bells for the Bells, Ladies Only, on 3220 First Avenue South, Sub-Zero Nitrogen Ice Cream at 10:00 AM. Jack Walsh is going to be singing a solo, and we've just run out of time. We also, on June 24th, we're also going to be at Town Square Park and hope to see you all there. Thank you for your support.
All right.
What time? What time on the 24th?
So it will be 3:00 until 8:00.
3:00 to 8:00 PM on June 24th. Thank you very much. Okay, Ann Blevins. And then after Ann, it's Debbie Harvey, Craig Patrick, Ken Blevins, and Dara Mandeville.
Hi. My concern right now, on 304th, you guys did a beautiful job, had a beautiful job of fixing that straight up. They've been waiting for well over a year for that. But now, they're still not being able to use it very much, because when you get off of Military Road, you can't get around, because traffic's coming from the other side takings, and so they can't get through. They need to rearrange the signal so that they can make it. And then, as they get to this side, there's no left turn signal. So they don't know what to do. They take a left turn in front of people? You know, it's very dangerous. So if you could do something about that, that would make us all very happy. And our other places where the, oh, this was caused by signals, left turn signals, all disappeared, a lot of them, except for on the very busiest, you know? But, I mean, where there's no signal, no left turn signal, and there are lots of them around Federway, gone. And I don't know why that's happened. Maybe somebody can explain it to us, but I'll tell you, it's really very dangerous.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ann. I'm going to have EJ Walsh connect up with you. I've got the contact from Miss here, but maybe while, during the meeting. Sure. Great, thank you for EJ. EJ is our Public Works Director. Okay, Deb Harvey.
Hi.
Debbie Harvey.
Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, President Kochmar, and rest of the council. My name is Debbie Harvey. I've lived in Federway since 1980, and I'm here tonight on behalf of the Senior Advisory Commission. And you may have heard that we held our first annual Senior Health and Resource Fair this past Thursday, May 11th, 2023, at the PAC Center. We had a very successful senior resource fair with over 40, well, we had 47 vendors participating, and we actually had to turn some of the vendors away, as we didn't have enough space to accommodate all the additional vendors. While we didn't do a headcount, per se, we did give out raffle tickets for vendor giveaways, and we're confident that we had over 200 individuals grace us with their presence. We've received only positive feedback, verbal and email, thanking us for a fantastic first ever senior resource fair. And so I'll just read you a couple of comments that we've received. The first one is, there was so much to like, and it was well-run, and a great place to network, and you can meet who's who for senior resources. Everyone seemed to be having a great time. We met our, we met so many friendly and kind people. You made us feel welcome. Someone wrote, what a great senior fair today. It was the first annual fair put on by the City of Federway Advisory Commission. They did an excellent job. It could not have gone better. I'm already looking forward to next year. So a very, very good program that we did. The commission would like to say a special thanks to Amy Gladon for going above and beyond her many coordinating talents. She did a great job. We'd also like to give a special recognition to Catherine North, our commissioner, for the hard work that went into making her suggestion of a Federway Senior Health and Resource Fair to become a reality. Awesome work for Catherine. To all of our other commissioners who worked diligently to ensure that everything went smoothly and everyone enjoyed themselves, vendors and citizens, I want to say a special thanks. And also thanks to Deputy Mayor Susan Honda for being in our corner and being with us the day of the event. Very much appreciated. And we had some council members, so like Council Member Walsh and Asafad Hassan attended, as well as the Mayor Farrell, the Council President Kochmar. So thank you very much. And I just want to wind up by a couple of things that I wanted to share tonight. As older Americans, our foundation of excellence is built with the quality of our actions and the integrity of our intent. For unless we try to do something beyond what we have already mastered, we may never grow. Please never doubt that a group of thoughtful, committed citizens can change the world. Indeed, it is the only thing that ever has. Coming together is the beginning, keeping together is progress, and working together is success. Thank you.
Thank you, Debbie. Craig Patrick.
Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, Council President, council members, Federway, citizens of Federway. My name's Craig Patrick. I live in Federway. I'm here to talk about Saturday, the 20th. We have worked a deal out with Rose at the Federway Public Market, where we're going to do a litter pick around 3/24th, 99, 3/20th, in that area. So this is a good opportunity for different organizations that work with the youth. We want to invite the youth to come out and maybe litter pick with us and build a working relationship with either progress pushers, or I see some gentlemen here and ladies in the group that facilitate working with other organizations and youths in that organization. So we're going to do a litter pick on Saturday, the 20th. We're going to be meeting at the market around 10:00 AM. If you get there a little bit earlier, we'll set up, we're going to have a sign-up sheet, we're going to have We're going to have a booth at the market this Saturday. Saturday seems to be like a busy day. Saturday evening at St. Vincent's at 6:15, we're going to be putting on a Ukrainian dinner to invite the Ukrainian community into Federal Way. There is a new group of Ukrainians that have come into the city. St. Vincent's de Paul's putting on a spaghetti feed for those folks. This is going to be at 6:15 at St. Vincent's on 8th Avenue, and I'm hoping that you guys can make it to that or the market, and you'll see us out there. You'll see stand-up community out there doing the litter pick. On May 30th, Seattle Irish Heritage Club is putting together an event for the Mariners game against New York Yankees. You can get discount tickets. With your tickets, you'll get a hoodie and a sweatshirt, and those are usually really fun events. A Mariners game's always a good time to go out there. Everyone's happy to be at a game. But this Saturday, we're working on the litter pick around the farmer's market at 10:00 a.m. and then the Ukrainian dinner around 6:15 at St. Vincent's. So I hope you guys can make it. Thanks for all you do, and have a good night.
All right. Thank you very much. Ken Blevins.
Ken Blevins, citizen of Federal Way for 50 years, almost 51. So in a couple of days, it's my birthday almost. She had me. So, middle kid, so I'm here. Anyways, just thanks very much for taking my comment. I was at, in Puyallup this last Friday and had a really good time. What they're doing in Puyallup every once a month on Friday, I'm not sure if everybody knows, is, and I'm not trying to do like a commercial for Puyallup, actually would love Federal Way to do things like this because it brings the community together and other communities to us. But old cars, they call it the cruise. We'd have to get rid of that ordinance that doesn't allow for cruising. So, because I remember doing that as a kid, and it was actually a lot of fun and probably maybe caused a little bit of trouble, but it was a lot of fun. But in this case, it'd just be a positive thing where there's a lot of older cars out there. People can, you know, sit there and enjoy themselves and enjoy the city itself and sit next to each other and get, get along. Next thing along with that, they have them in Enham Claw and also in Sumner as well. And I think Federal Way, it would be a really cool thing if we did something like that around maybe the mall or something like that. And so just get people to our city and showcase it. Another thing that I miss in Federal Way, and it has been a long time, is a parade. I think that would bring out the community as well. I know we have the July 4th thing, but really, honestly, I think the July 4th thing should go back to the communities. We should get fireworks back to our town so that we can get legal fireworks and that people actually do fireworks legally on their own block, and it brings everybody together. And that way, it's not so disconnected, and you have to go to this big, huge area in Federal Way. You don't really see anybody because they're, everybody's just kind of getting along and, you know, parking and trying to get there and trying to get back home and so on safely. But if you're in your own neighborhood, you get together, you can do like Neighborhood Watch and talk to, talk about just your neighborhood itself. But a parade would be awesome. I remember when I was a young dad, and I would put my kids in a trailer behind me, and I'd ride right down it. So it was kind of fun. I also remember as a little kid doing it, too. So I hope we can maybe just think about bringing that stuff back to Federal Way, because I know we're a bigger city, but a lot of people don't understand our, our past and our heritage and what we're about here. We're about inclusiveness and bringing everybody here. Growing up in Federal Way in the schools, Federal Way High School and so on, we've always been diversified, and we always welcome more. But I think keeping or letting people know what we're all about, kind of being a small town in between the big cities, maybe a little bit more of that would be great, just be a positive thing. So just some comments about that. But thanks, everybody, for serving on our council and the mayor. I appreciate you guys. Thanks.
Thanks, Ken. Great ideas. Thank you. Bill, I hope you got all those. So let's, let's talk about that tomorrow, especially the parade. I want to talk about that. Dara Mandeville.
Good evening. Thank you for having me. Oh, Dara Mandeville, Federal Way, sorry. I actually didn't write anything down for once. I came up tonight because I genuinely and sincerely, I know that I've been a thorn in the police department's side and the council's side. On May 4th, Thursday, May 4th, I'm sure lots of you saw it because I was relentless. My mom's vehicle was stolen from Federal Way, Fred Meyer, with her vehicle, with her dog in the car. And when I tell you that this city came out and supported our family, it was, I don't even know how to describe it. I don't. This dog's been my mom's best friend since she lost her best friend 11 years ago. She wasn't sleeping, she wasn't eating. It was amazing. Our Federal Way officers were amazing. There's no words other to describe it. So I wanted to genuinely, on record, say thank you very, very much. And then, second of all, I, I live in Twin Lakes, and I was very close by to the shooting that happened on Monday. And I was bothered by it because obviously I'm plugged into lots of different places and heard what actually happened, or what we know. And I went on Nextdoor, and a gal said that she was there, and she had a duck for cover and very dramatic, and that the Hispanic gentleman that was shooting was just shooting at random people, and people were ducking for cover, and he ran into the bushes. And it bothered me because this is my city, and that wasn't true. Is there a way that I feel like we hear about these things from our neighbors and we see the, you know, chopper overhead? How do we follow up on stuff like that, other than, obviously, we can't call the police station and ask? But I feel like we need to figure out like a general way for those of us that care about our community, that we can follow up on those things and shut these rumors down, because we don't need any more trouble in our city. And just so, I just feel like there's no closure, and so rumors just spread and get worse and worse. So that's all. That's all I wanted to say. And thank you, Andy and your officers, very much. Thanks.
Thank you, Dara. And thank you very much for, for putting those words out. And also, when we get done with public comment, I'll have some comments about how to, how to address some of that stuff like Nextdoor, so I'll, I'll do that at the end.
Could I ask a question?
Yes.
Dara, I know the dog was returned. Someone brought the dog into a pet store in return?
In Tacoma. Somebody tied him up. Well, the gentleman, the guy that brought him into the pet store said that he found him outside, and he was handed him to an employee and walked away, so we don't really know.
And he's, the dog's okay?
He was pretty traumatized, but we took him to the vet and checked out, and he's good.
Well, thank you for letting people know on social media, because I know that was very concerning. Thank you.
Very good. Chuck?
I was simply going to request that Dara give the happy ending to the, to the story with, with the dog being recovered, so anyway.
So, and do you have your car back yet?
No.
Well, we're happy, but we're, this community really loves their pets. We can tell you that about dogs in particular, so thank heavens for that.
Okay, Jeffrey Tancredi.
Good evening, Mayor, council members, council president, deputy mayor. Jeff Tancredi, Federal Way resident, Colonial Forest. I was encouraged, Mr. Mayor, with the legislature, I understand, they passed a law today making it a gross misdemeanor, although it could have been better, but it's better than nothing to have the gross misdemeanor for the drug, hard drug possession gives the, it's encouraging because now there's a mechanism in place to get these folks who are struggling with drug addiction, get them cited, but not to try to hurt them, but get them on a path to rehabilitation into treatment. So I was encouraged to, to hear about that today. But one of the things that they were saying on the talk radio is that the local mayors from King County, including yourself, Mayor, who, because you were going to have your own ordinances, applied some pressure to the state legislature, that influenced them to at least get a, get it to be a gross misdemeanor. So, but yeah, and having said that, you know, I've been around to a lot of local businesses and talked to them, especially if I see somebody, some groups of folks who are struggling, looks like they're struggling with drug addiction, whether it be near Cafe Noir, or the Korean Palace BBQ, or Moa, their hairstylist, Home &amp; Home, at various Goodyear, Goodwill. And so I've gone into those places and said, hey, you know, I'm such and such, I'm with a volunteer group, you know, we're concerned, we share your frustration. And, and so I think, and I've, I told, I advised them, I say, hey, you know, you can call 911. You can call, if they're trespassing on your property, you can call 911. You don't have to be, if you don't feel comfortable becoming confrontational or going out to talk to them, if they're trespassing, you can call 911. But I think it's important because now that we have this law in place, you have these folks that are, that have these businesses in Federal Way, and the last thing that they want to have is, you know, folks that are struggling with whatever they're struggling with, right there on their front door. It's just not good. And I noticed that where the Home &amp; Home is, which is now closed, I understand, I think H Mart owns that, I'm just wondering, I'm just thinking, if I was a business owner, since that's not opened, if they could put, consider putting fencing all up in front there, because there's a huge overhang, and the folks that are struggling with drug addiction, it's hard to see them when they're leaning up in there against those businesses. And I think Moa is the only one on the end there that's still there, and, you know, she's kind of on an island. And when you got all these folks that are struggling with drug addiction there, if there was some fencing around there to protect those so that they wouldn't go over there, just a thought. Thanks. Thanks for your time.
Thank you, Jeffrey. Let's see here. Anna Patrick, and then Sonia Lynn. I have a hard time reading that.
Evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, Council President and Council, public. So I just kind of typed this up, so I'm going to read it. I strongly believe that in today's society, government entities should embrace a data-driven approach to decision-making. However, it is evident that the current practices fall short of providing a comprehensive understanding of the issues at hand. This limited perspective only scratches the surface, failing to capture the true extent of disparities and challenges faced by communities. For instance, when it comes to housing, the focus on labeling it as 80% AMI, low income overlooks the underlying complexities and wider disparities that exist. We need to delve deeper and explore the larger picture to gain a holistic understanding of the situation. Similarly, I have noticed that King County Regional Homeless Authority tends to classify deaths as accidental under harm reduction, masking the true nature of the problem, drug addiction and its associated overdose deaths. This narrow perspective fails to address the root causes and prevent future tragedies effectively. We must acknowledge the gravity of the situation and work towards implementing comprehensive solutions. Moreover, the current emphasis on housing as the sole measure of success disregards other important factors. True success should involve a multifaceted approach that accounts for the overall well-being and stability of individuals and communities. In terms of the criminal justice system, it is disheartening to witness a focus on the identification of who is being targeted by the criminal justice system, rather than recognizing the victims of crimes who are being targeted by criminals and perpetrators. This approach fails to hold people individually accountable for their actions and neglects to the needs of those affected by criminal activities. To make informed decisions, we must consider comprehensive data sets that analyze individual trends and the effectiveness of different interventions and work together on this. I have expressed these concerns to various government entities, including the City of Federal Way Police Department, the City of Federal Way, and the school district. It is imperative that we prioritize accurate data collection, comprehensive analysis, and the integration of support systems and accountability measures. Therefore, I strongly urge the inclusion of neighbors' training as a mandatory requirement for the Federal Way Police Department. This training will ensure officers possess the necessary skills to collect accurate data and enable informed decisions-making processes and implore King County to collect victim incidents reporting in addition to the arrest data. This must be incorporated as an urgent measure to provide the full picture of impact in our communities as jails are being closed. Thank you.
Thanks, Anna. All right. Sonia, can you help us with your last name? I just can't read it. I'm sorry.
It's okay. How's it going, everybody? My name's Sonia LeWelu, also known as Sunny. I'm with the Federal Way Warriors Athletics. We had brought rugby to the city last year. I usually come up here and talk about the Island Bowl and the reason why, you know, but I really want to talk about the reason why I'm here is because of the youth, is because of the Pacific Islander community, you know? It's the reason why I'm here. It's the reason why I was awarded the proclamation. It's not because of me or anything, it's more so the community. And last year, we started off with 30 kids. You know, that was our first season. This year, we're starting to enter our second season off, and we had 70 kids signed up this year with youth rugby. So I wanted to grow more in Federal Way, because I'm not trying to grow rugby, I'm trying to use rugby to help the community, because I see how much it impacts the youth and adults at all levels. And it's just not for just one certain individual, it's for everybody, boys, girls, all different colors from it, all different sizes. So that's really what it is. And that's, that's the reason why I'm up here today, and not just to talk about what I'm doing, but the community and what's out there, and some of the things to, to help those issues. And that's the reason why I like calling Federal Way home, because it reminds me so much of where I come from. I grew up in West Seattle, I went to Ring Beach High School, similar background to what Federal Way is kind of today, and it gives me more of a purpose to reach out to these kids, because they can't tell me I don't understand, you know? And like, everybody speaks here, you know, it takes a village, you know, to come together to make the changes, and I'm a strong believer in that as well, so that's the reason why I'm here as well, to see what you guys do and how we can connect and how we can collab to make the community a better home. So that's really it. And thank you guys again for the, you know, the proclamation, the award, and everything you guys are doing for the city. You know, I know it's pretty tough being where you guys are seated at, at your guys' level, so, and I really appreciate it. So, thank you, guys.
All right. Thank you so much. Appreciate it. Okay. Now, we've got Sally McLean with the school, with the school district here. I've got both a general comment and also for public hearing. Sally, did you want to talk now, or did you want to wait, wait till we get to the public hearing? Or is it two separate comments?
Yeah. So take two separate comments.
Yeah, come on. And I know you've got a, I know you've got a hard stop at nine, so would it be okay if we heard her comment now for the public hearing?
She signed up.
Okay. So Sally?
I did sign up, if I understood the directions correctly, I signed up for both the public comment and the public hearing.
Okay, great.
Because I did not believe I could capture everything that we wanted to share this evening in, in three minutes. And so I was trying to capture the full six minutes that would be available.
We'll give you six.
By doing that.
How about if we just give you six right now?
That would be great.
Let's do that, please. Thank you. You represent 23,000 schoolchildren, 5,000 employees at the school, you know? So I, I think you will, you will meet our rule with regard to at least five minutes, but the foragers.
I appreciate that accommodation, and will stay as long as I can, because I do want to hear the presentations and
Very good.
and the other public comment. So, good evening, Mayor Farrell, Deputy Mayor Honda, Council President Kochmar, members of the council, and City of Federal Way staff, and the community. My name is Sally D. McLean, and I am here this evening representing Superintendent Dr. Danny Pfeiffer regarding the proposed changes to the school impact fees in the code amendments referred to as the Housing Action Plan Implementation, or HAPPEY. They don't really make us happy. Just, you know, so you know what's to come. You know, just, so just to set the stage, school impact fees are collected from developers, residential developers, to help offset the cost of providing additional classrooms for new students that arrive with new development. It costs our shared taxpayers more to generate $1 million to create capacity for about 100 students, but it costs our taxpayers more to generate that $1 million than any other King County school district. So school impact fees are a critical component to providing both additional capacity typically, by way of portables, to serve these new scholars, and to maintaining our commitment to our local taxpayers, who support us with the educational programs and operations levy, with the technology levy, and with the most recent bond, which was passed in 2017, with more than a 60% yes vote. The school impact fee is calculated annually, and it's based on a set of prescribed parameters, including the cost of school construction and something called student generation rates, or how many students are coming to the district out of that new development. Various credits are applied to that calculation, and then the whole result is discounted by 50%. So the school impact fee calculation is not an arbitrary or capricious calculation, but an agreed-upon methodology that's been in place for more than 20 years, and is used by all King County school districts. Given the years of collaboration around school impact fees with the City of Federal Way, the district willingly entered into good faith negotiations to develop more predictable school impact fees, which was a recommendation that came out of your Heartland study. The draft first presented to L U T C, Land Use and Transportation Committee in April, represented the results of the staff work with one exception, which I had called out at that point in time, related to what I was referring to as extraordinary student generation rates from new development. And so for context, Federal Way Public Schools has experienced the highest number of students from multifamily housing in all of King County. The last development watermark, which is outside of the City of Federal Way, on the boundary, but in unincorporated King County, is a complex of 221 units or front doors. I like that description. And we are currently have 319 students enrolled in Federal Way schools out of those 221 units, generating a student generation rate factor of 1.44, which is more than seven times the average previously experienced by the district, and again, one of the highest in King County. Right now, we're kind of neck and neck with the Auburn School District. So we sincerely appreciate the addition and recognition of the number of bedrooms as a potential trigger for collecting school impact fees in the downtown core and frame. But we do have other concerns with the proposed ordinance in front of you, and I will speak in more detail about those concerns and have specific requested changes for your consideration. So the significant differences for the school district that exist between the first draft that was presented in April and what is in front of the full city council tonight is related to the actual cap or ceiling on school impact fees. So originally, we were calculating that cap on school impact fees based on the average of the last 20 years, including this year's unprecedented zero fee. The ordinance in front of you this evening further reduces the cap by excluding years when school impact fees were greater than 15,000. And again, they were greater than 15,000 largely because of that student generation rate, the large numbers of students that we saw come out of the four large multifamily complexes, creating what we believe that is a ceiling or a cap that is artificially low. Two, the annual escalator to the cap was proposed to recognize the fact that inflation impacts school district construction costs. This inflator was identified from the engineering news record, the Seattle Area Construction Cost Index, and is the same escalator used by Pierce County and the City of Kent. The current draft ordinance sets the annual escalation at 5% and is inconsistent with these other jurisdictions who've implemented school impact fees. There is a new provision to exempt significant areas from any school impact fees that is of very much concern. Given that the city center and community business zones would likely be multifamily development, and given that multifamily development can generate large numbers of students, it's highly likely that expanded student capacity will be needed at all schools. So the district specifically requests that the ceiling or cap be based on the last 20-year average, which is 2004 to 2023, that we do utilize the standard Seattle Area Construction Cost Index for the annual inflator, and that some consideration be given to retaining the current practice of discounting the downtown core and frame by an additional 50% and that we maintain the school impact fee in its entirety in the community business zone.
Sally, do you need a couple more minutes?
I can probably wrap up in 10. So 10 seconds, not 10 minutes.
Oh, okay.
Sorry. I saw the mouth drop, and I'm like, wait, let me clarify that.
If you needed 10, I'd probably give it to you, but
Well, I appreciate that.
But let's put two minutes on.
So let me just summarize really quickly. But we believe that without the developers providing some contribution to the cost of creating new school capacity, the district will be required to allocate limited dollars to meet the anticipated influx of new scholars, and taxpayers will ultimately bear 100% of the cost of the new capacity. We continue to be interested in partnering with the city, again, to find a predictable school impact fee. We believe that benefits both the district and our developers, and will ultimately provide more housing and increase the assessed valuation across the district, which is a benefit to all. But we do think there are some changes that need to be considered in tonight's ordinance. So thank you for your consideration.
Thank you so much, Sally. And when we get back up to this, I'll ask you again if whether you've got anything
Okay.
when we get to that point.
All right.
So thank you very much.
Thank you for your consideration.
All right. Okay. Now, let's go to, we have, I think that's all we've got in regard to in-person. Then we've got online, Tony Armstrong.
Yes. Thomas, I'll go ahead and unmute him.
Let's, before we do that, is Dr. Said here? Dr. Said? All right, I'm not going to say it. All right. Tony Armstrong.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Deputy Mayor Honda, Council President Kochemar, and honorable council members. We're so pleased to discuss and listen to the discussion about what is good about Federal Way. Thank you for the opportunity also to speak to you regarding the need to maintain a humane, non-lethal approach to our wildlife. Unfortunately, as we have summarized to the mayor, the Twin Lakes Homeowners Association is taking steps to eradicate the declining population of Canada geese and their goslings through a contract with the Department of Agriculture Animal Control. The roundup and killing of these wonderful animals, and by the way, their population is considerably declining because of the non-lethal methods to control it. The good news is that there are effective and humane methods to control the geese population, short of breaking their wings and gassing them, which is the current procedure, rather cruel and inhumane to say the least. When people discover these methods that are being used, they're shocked and disbelieving. We and many of our neighbors have requested that the Homeowners Association cancel this cruel methodology of controlling the population and instead commit to tried and true humane wildlife deterrent methods. The Humane Society of the United States lists three top ways to solve these problems, and to our knowledge, they are not being used: egg addling, border collies, and improved planting of bushes. We support the HOAs and golf clubs using humane methods of controlling the Canada geese population, but we do not support the methodologies that are about to take place in Twin Lakes. The killings are unproductive and unnecessary because new gagles of geese will fill the void created by the absence of other geese. We urge the TLO, the Homeowners Association, the golf clubs, and other lake management organizations to develop and implement a humane, effective Canada goose population management program. There's no question that they need, the population does need to have humane control. Who in the world, however, would want Federal Way to be known for inhumane killing of wildlife? You know, Mr. Mayor, you went through some wonderful things that are going on, eradicating wildlife. It just does not seem to be consistent with that. As a result, we're requesting that the, that you, that the council prepare either an ordinance or a resolution encouraging non-lethal control and prohibiting the ineffective gassing of geese and their young. We believe that would be a step forward, and we would be, we would like the city to encourage a negotiation between all the parties to arrive at a good solution relative to the Canadian geese. Thank you very much for your, for the opportunity to speak to you all.
All right. Thank you very much. Okay, now moving on to, let's see here, we do also have a letter that was mailed from them as well, right, from Tony and Bonnie Armstrong?
Yes. All the written comments are emailed to the council and uploaded on the website.
Okay. Do we have anybody else on the line?
Not, I don't see anybody with their hands raised, so.
Okay. All right. To my understanding, we do not have any more public comment. Okay.
And Mayor, I think that Dr. Said wanted to come when we had our legislators here.
Oh, I see.
He wanted to talk about current legislation and how it was affecting crime in our community.
I see. All right. Thank you very much. Okay, that concludes public comment. Thank you, everybody, for your participation. Very much appreciate it. It's vital for us to hear this, this comment. All right. Number five presentations, item A, Proclamation for Affordable Housing Week, Councilmember Doby.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Farrell. I'm fortunate enough to read a proclamation for Affordable Housing Week that happened last week. And the reason I'm excited to be able to read this is Federal Way is doing a lot of things here to make more affordable housing, reduce fees so builders can build homes, so people can actually live in them. And we're very thankful that we can actually do this proclamation. I have three people here that I'm going to present it to. I know I'm going to butcher the first name, Ma Joe, and I can't pronounce your last name, and probably did the wrong, first name wrong, too. And then we also have Claire Goodwin and dorsal plants with us. So thank you for being here, and I'll read the proclamation. Whereas all people should have access to safe, healthy, and affordable homes within communities that provide opportunity, and whereas the COVID-19 pandemic has exacerbated many existing financial constraints for low and moderate income households, and whereas everyone benefits from affordable housing, including the people who reside in these properties, their neighbors, businesses, employers, and the community as a whole, and whereas people, organizations, and communities throughout King County are utilizing Local Affordable Housing Week activities to raise public awareness of the need for full community participation, and whereas the City of Federal Way firmly commits itself to ensuring that our community's recovery from the crisis at hand is equitable and for all people in Federal Way to live with dignity in safe, healthy, and affordable homes. And now, therefore, we, the undersigned mayor and city council members of the City of Federal Way, do hereby proclaim May 7th through May 13th, 2023, as Affordable Housing Week, and call upon all citizens to encourage opportunities for affordable housing in Federal Way, signed the 16th day of May 23rd. Now, we're presenting this for a week last week because this is a crucial thing for all our citizens going forward. It makes us a strong city, a strong community. And so I'm honored to be able to present this to the three people. Here for us. Thank you. Thank you very much. And thank you for being here. And would someone like to speak? Please address us.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Major Kurishy. I represent the Multi-Service Center on South King Housing and Homeless Advisory Board, which is a partnership of South King County Cities working on affordable housing that Federal Way is a member of. I've also been a Federal Way resident for the last 14 years. Thank you for proclaiming May 7th through the 13th as Affordable Housing Week and for your recognition of the urgent need for affordable homes in our community. As your proclamation states, many of our neighbors are still struggling just to stay housed after the pandemic. 67% of the students in the Federal Way School District are accessing free or reduced lunch, and the character of our communities are at risk as friends and neighbors are further displaced by rising housing costs. As a Skip Advisory Board member and as someone who works closely on affordable housing projects in Federal Way, I am encouraged by the council's support for helping ensure that we have enough housing to meet the needs of all income levels in the community. I think it's especially important considering our city is centered on opportunity. Thank you for this proclamation and continued dedication to advancing affordability for our most vulnerable residents. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Do you want to address the council? Everybody else?
I can briefly address the council if you don't mind. Good evening. My name is Claire Goodwin. I just wanted to introduce myself. I'm the executive manager for the South King Housing and Homelessness Partners, or Skip for short. And thank you so much for recognizing Affordable Housing Week. We're thrilled to accept this proclamation on behalf of the countless individuals working in affordable housing in Federal Way and throughout our region. And as a Skip member, Federal Way has been an integral part of advancing funding for affordable housing through financial contributions to the Skip Housing Capital Fund, using substitute House Bill 1406 revenue, which is a credit on the state sales tax, which funded two affordable housing projects this year in South King County. So we're thrilled to have Federal Way as a collaborative partner and look forward to working with you in the years to come to address affordable housing needs in our community for our most vulnerable residents. So thank you so much.
Thank you. All right. David, you want to see if you can grab a picture as well?
Yeah.
We'll make it official with David.
That's right.
Oh, thank you.
All right.
Thank you very much for what you do. Appreciate it.
Okay, before we go to the next proclamation, I promised Deramendeville an answer to your question you posed during public comment. If there is a particular post in a social media, like Nextdoor, or something like that, that's sort of left-hanging, that's concerning, just reach out either to my office, or, you know, my office, or a city council member, you know, anybody here at the city. And what we'll do is, you know, normally what happens is we've got a communications person with the police department that can provide what's releasable. There are certain types of, obviously, like what occurred at the gas station yesterday was concerning everybody in the community, especially up here. And I told my family members about it immediately after it happened. So, you know, what I would say is if there's just sort of anything kind of hanging out there, let us know, and we can provide that information, and we can get, you know, the right facts out, where folks like you or other folks that are on that platform can get the right message out. But I think you're right. Misinformation and disinformation is really, it concerns people, you know, breeds fear, and we certainly don't want that. We want people to know what actually happened. And so, but I got to tell you, that's, that whole thing was just absolutely, you know, absurd and dangerous and crazy and all over, you know, people, you know, being inconvenienced momentarily for gas. It's just absolutely crazy. So we're investigating that, and, you know, if you want to get what we tell the media, we can let you know that. Thank you. Hope that helps. Okay, now, moving on. Item B, which is the Proclamation of Public Works Week. We've got Deputy Mayor Honda.
Thank you. National Public Works Week. Whereas public works professionals focus on infrastructure, facilities, and services of vital importance to sustainable and resilient communities and public health within the City of Federal Way. Whereas public works services include rebuilding, improving, and protecting our community's transportation, water supply, water treatment, and solid waste systems, and public buildings, and could not be accomplished without the dedicated efforts of public works professionals, including engineers, managers, and employees with both the private and public sector. Whereas the year 2023 marks the 63rd Annual National Public Works Week, sponsored by the American Public Works Association and Canadian Public Works Association. Whereas the theme for this year is connecting the world through public works throughout the nation. And now, we, the undersigned mayor and city council members of the City of Federal Way, do hereby proclaim May 21st through May 27th, 2023, to be National Public Works Week, and call upon the City of Federal Way to pay tribute to the substantial contributions of the public works professionals in our community, signed the 16th day of May, 2023. And I would just like to say my thanks to the Public Works Department, especially in the snow and ice. I mean, they're the ones out there making sure that we can drive on those roads. So among the many other things they do. among the many other things they do.
Okay, now, official, you guys are perfect right there. Got it, three guys. One, two, three, and then please do one, two. Thanks.
Thank you, Mayor and council, for the proclamation. It truly does mean a lot to all the employees that are out there, day in and day out, and I will share this with them tomorrow morning. Our staff works hard every day on behalf of the city, pretty much seven days a week, out there doing everything from picking up trash on the road to building new sidewalks to the large capital projects that you see that moves ahead the policies that the council sets. So on behalf of all of the employees in Public Works, I personally want to thank each and every one of you for this, and thanks.
All right, thank you very much. Okay, item C, proclamation for Mental Health Month. Councilmember Walsh.
All right, proclamation, Mental Health Awareness Month. Whereas mental health is essential to everyone's overall health and well-being, and whereas half of the population will experience some type of mental health challenge in the course of their lifetimes, and whereas prevention is an effective way to reduce the burden of mental health conditions, and whereas every person can make a difference in helping end the silence and stigma that for too long has surrounded mental health illness by promoting mental wellness and supporting efforts. And now therefore, we, the undersigned mayor and city council of the City of Federal Way, do hereby proclaim May 2023 as Mental Health Awareness Month, and call upon the community to increase awareness and understanding of the importance of mental health and access to supportive services, signed the 16th day of May, 2023. And I would just like to add that the trauma of mental illness has impacted my family in various ways, including some, a dear niece and her family being survivors of suicide. And it has a profound impact on everyone in one way or another. And I personally want to thank those who are here. And so I'll be presenting this to Marcos Sauri, Vice Chair of the King County Recovery Coalition Advisory Board, Lonnie Stores, and Sarah Nicole Donnie.
I just want to thank each one of you. I had the opportunity to do this, and we need to work with yourself and yourself, Mayor. And I want to add, as is stated here in the proclamation, our definition of mental health, as is described by the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, includes our emotional, psychological, and social well-being, and it affects how we think, how we feel, and how we act. It also helps determine how we handle threats, relate to others, and make healthy choices. Mental health is important at every single stage of life, from childhood and adolescence through adulthood. So I really applaud you for doing this again. I was honored to be here last year. And as community, as society, as parents, as volunteers, as active members of the recovery community, it is a huge responsibility to make sure that the stigma is out the way and we get to normalize the approach of mental health. Mental health itself is not the issue. The way we go about approaching it is the main issue, the leads to mental health disorders and mental illness. This particular year, I made a point to bring some of our community members. I'm a Federal Way resident myself, and I do my best. I get involved in many different opportunities to be of service and volunteer and give back what's been given to me. But there is no difference when someone in house who struggled with addiction for a number of years needs the help, or someone coming out of the military after active duty and is struggling with PTSD or trauma. There is no difference. But as society, so as long as we don't get that different approach going, the stigma won't limit our ability to tackle this issue, which is reflected in many different ways. It's not just mental health itself. It's what it brings to the communities, in-house individuals, addiction, community violence, community crime, and so forth. So again, I'm grateful that Federal Way has taken approach in such a way, and I thank you all.
Hi, my name's Lonnie. I also live in Federal Way now, like, in a house. I used to be a huge burden on the community up and down Pack Highway and First Avenue, and in multiple encampments and all of that stuff between the addiction, the homelessness, and then also the trauma of it all. When I finally did get clean, I had to deal with a lot of the mental health stuff. And I just want to say thank you for acknowledging that and for supporting things like this because, you know, a lot of the other issues that I heard being spoken about tonight, a lot of those start with mental health. And I'm glad to see you guys taking care, or taking, making it a priority. Thank you, guys.
All right, thank you. Okay, great. Next, we've got the very special, thank you for the work you do, very much, we appreciate it very much. We've got the Hanworye Garden and Korean Pavilion update. Ray Robinson is here to give a presentation. And Stephanie, do we have any parameters on what we thought about in regard to time?
I think he's prepped with what he has. I think he was given five minutes, 20 minutes?
All right. Go ahead, Ray. Great to see you again. Ray was with us in, it was part of our delegation in Korea, and we went all over, you know, from Seoul over to Donghae and toured all over. So it was great. Appreciate it. We actually went to the equivalent of their White House there, which is called the Blue House, and all kinds of places. Okay, all right. Ray, the floor is yours.
Good evening, Mayor Farrell, Deputy Mayor Honda, city council members, administrative staff, and residents of Federal Way. Thank you so much for giving us time to present this very special project. I have a digital presentation. I'll be talking, and I'll try and stay within time limits and hopefully answer any questions should there be time to do that. This is the Hanworye Korean Garden, and this is a cultural monument which occurs in South Korea, and that's why I have it on the front page here. Very important cultural element. And this is the site in Federal Way. And so I will walk you through a bit of the history and where we're at now. So I want to start with the context. I'm not going to, I'm a proponent of not reading what's on the screen, and you'll probably thank me for that. But, so what I want to say is that I had the privilege of traveling to South Korea with the delegation, meeting many of the city staff in Donghae, seeing the city, and getting a good sense of Donghae and the relevance to Federal Way because Donghae is our sister city. I also have to confess, I haven't been to Federal Way in many, many years as a young man, and recently came back and privileged to work on this project. And what I want to say is that there are many, many strong correlations between Donghae and Federal Way. Couple of things that I want to say. First, Hanworye means essentially, we are one. And that's a very special statement considering that we're sister cities and what this, really, this garden is going to be. It's, we're one with Donghae, and it's a demonstration of that. The other remarkable things that I want to say as a difference between Donghae and Federal Way is that Donghae is about half the size in area as Federal Way and approximately the same population. We're both coastal cities, we have mountains at our back, vital economic sustainability programs. So there are many things that we share as sister cities, and that's why this garden is so important, as a demonstration of the solidarity and also the affinity that we have. I'm just going to read the shared values. Democratic governance, respect for cultural diversity, abundant natural environment, the geography, which I've mentioned, and the necessity for environmental and economic sustainability. Those are things that we, these two cities share, and which is really the basis of what this garden is becoming. I'm going to give you a really quick primer on how we got to where we are. In 2015, the vision of Hanworye Park emerged, and it was really searching for a site. And another site had been chosen, it was rather large. And ultimately, in 2017, the Panther Lake Trail and Parking Lot were created, and right next door, it seemed like a great place for Hanworye Park to be. And so Mike Parks, who's a previous mayor, past mayor, Pete Von Rockbauer, who is a county council member, and many other state, regional, and county officials have been working on this for some time. So it has a lot of weight behind it. You can see here, we've got a number of years before anything happens, and we come to 2021. There was a, essentially, a groundbreaking for the park. And Mayor Farrell, city council member, and again, many state, regional, and city departmental heads and so forth attended that. And importantly, importantly, was the Federal Way Korean-American Association. This association is really the foundation of this park happening and a celebration of the Korean culture in Federal Way. So moving to 2022, the Hanworye Park Plan, a concept plan, was developed, and the city approved the site for the Hanworye Garden in terms of it can happen here, this use can happen here. And that was a really big step for coming closer and completing this vision that started in 2015. So we move forward another year, and now I was privileged to be a member of the delegation. I was actually kind of a tag along, and I really enjoyed myself. And I was able to observe our mayor, your mayor, presenting plaques to not only the governor of the province, but also to the mayor of Donghae. I wish I could enlarge this, but what I want to say is you're looking at a very happy delegation in front of Donghae's governmental buildings. And here's the cultural monument that I was discussing, the delegation is in front of that. So actually, there's a park already in Donghae, which is the equivalent of what we're wanting to create here in Federal Way. And this is a traditional building. It has great cultural significance, and it's something that we want to bring here as well. And then down here, again, I'm sorry, I can't enlarge this, but we're beginning the work on design refinement for the park so that it can be implemented. Give me a show of hands. How many people know where this, where the Panther Lake Trail Parking Lot is? Whoops, sorry. Which is right here. Here's the Aquatic Center. Is everybody pretty familiar with this area? Yes, no? Okay. So this is essentially a parkway that comes through here. It's the Campus Drive. This is the King County Aquatic Center. This is the Hanworye Site right here. And then here's the parking lot, the existing parking lot. So blown up, you have a better sense of what it looks like. It's highly vegetated, trees. It slopes from the parkway down to the trail system that goes all around the lake, and then the adjacency of entry off the turnpike into the parking lot. I want to stress that this is a conceptual plan. We're at the baby stages of it, refining it. So keep in mind, this isn't exactly what's going to be built. This is the very beginning stage of talking about what the critical elements are. So I want to talk to you about that. This is a monument which has the very same one in the park that we visit in Donghae. It's Indiana limestone, it's got a beautiful carving on it, and we will have it at our garden also. This is the cultural element that we're calling the Pavilion. It has a very, very long traditional history within the Korean culture. And what I want to say about that, what's very special about this for us, is that craftsmen will build this in South Korea, ship it here, and then erect it on the site. And so this was absolutely a historical, cultural element that has its roots in South Korea. Other elements are that there are four seasonal gardens at the corners or near the corners. And we want to celebrate, yes, even in the Northwest, we have four seasons. People in New England don't think so, but we really do. So we have summer, spring, fall, and winter gardens that'll have particular significance with particular plants that we can find in South Korea. We will have an entry element of some sort to come into the garden, possibly a perimeter wall. And again, these are all traditional elements. So the materials will be from the United States. They'll very much mimic what we find in South Korea, and we want them crafted in a traditional way. There'll be paving. Again, stone is, and ceramic tile are elements that are very important in the Korean culture, as is wood for the pavilion. I know you can't read this, but I'm going to walk you through this because I want to, this is a chart saying where we're actually at. And so, right here in May, this began the process of what we call creating entitlements, and the administrative staff is working on this as we speak. Essentially, the arrangement's going to be, the park will be on city land. The Federal Way Korean-American Association will be funding the development of this, and it'll be open to the public. So it has a little bit of complexity to it, as you can appreciate, and administrative staff is crafting that agreement that enables us to do this. So we, once this is crafted, we will go into what's called pre-development. And essentially, what will happen is that I will be working with the city on what are the code and building code requirements for this park. In other words, how do we permit this and meet all the requirements of the city? Very important. That's a very basic first step. Then what we're going to do is complete the permitting process, and then we will move into bidding. And so this is where the association and my office work closely together, finding qualified contractors, getting bids, and awarding the contracts so that this can be implemented. And then the next stage is implementation, and these flags, which I didn't explain to you, this is the crest for your you, this is the crest for your city, this is my company, and this is the association. Essentially, we've now started what's called a three-legged stool, and we need all three legs. We need the clients, the consultant, and construction team, and the city. This is going to enable us to create this in a timely way, in the way that we envision and that you've come to know this park as we design it. And this last one, and why I have an extra big red button here, is that not only do we have the City of CTEC, excuse me, Federal Way, Integrated Site Design, the Association, but we also have representatives from Donghe who will be coming here to help us open this What's missing are dates. Once we have the entitlements and understand what the permit requirements will be, then we can actually create a schedule with a date in which we can have an opening. We are aiming for fall of this year, and we're working closely with staff to achieve that. So I hope that this was informative. And Mayor and Council, can I take questions at this point, or how would I proceed?
Councilor Walsh and then the Council President.
Oh, I, you know, it looks, thank you to the Korean American Association, beautiful idea, but I'm wondering, you know, this would be important for the Korean community, but I'm wondering if they would be able to have weddings in this little pavilion.
I would have to turn that question over possibly to Josephine. We haven't discussed all the uses, but it is for public use. So what I would say is, it would be an arrangement with the Federal Way Korean-American Association, certainly in the city.
Just a suggestion, I just thought it would be perfect for somebody, especially with a Korean background, who wanted to have something with their culture, I think would be just a lovely idea. But in a small, sort of an affair, it just looks perfect to me. But, thank you. I'm not trying to say, I'm just suggesting.
Yeah, that's a great one.
All right, Council, any other questions? Councilor Doby?
I just had one question. You said fall, is that when you expect to start doing everything? Definitely not finish it by then, correct?
Well...
Or, I mean, it would be great if you could, but...
Yeah.
I don't see, this is a multi-year project, is it not?
The date actually was set some time ago with the expectation that certain things would happen sooner. And so the wheels haven't turned as quickly as we would like. And so we've kept that date with the hope that we can do it, and we may have to adjust to the reality of the wheels turning.
Okay, that's great news. Thank you.
Councilor Walsh?
Yeah, I would just like to comment that on our trip to Korea, we saw beautiful structures similar to this, beautiful gardens. And this will indeed be a great, a great thing to have here in Federal Way. And it can help tie our sister cities together, and also recognize the great contribution of the Federal Way Korean-American Association. I want to express my thanks to the Federal Way Korean-American Association and the great contribution that they are to the community.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Deputy Mayor?
Thank you. Well, first of all, welcome to Federal Way. But who's going to maintain the park? Will it be the Parks Department that maintains this park?
We're actually working that out. It's going to be, we're doing a memorandum of understanding right now. My understanding is, obviously, you know, the, we will assist, John, can you help out with that, with the MOU?
Yes, I think that probably leaning that direction, where the city would, it would become a city park, and the city would be probably responsible for most of the maintenance. Still consulting with the Korean American Association, who've been obviously instrumental in this, and we want to make sure we do things correctly.
Okay, and security? You know, there's going to be a lot of lovely things here that, it's right on Campus Drive, right on Campus Drive, I would be concerned. I hope that there's cameras set up around, so...
Well, I'll have to consider that, and that's something that we'll have to have the chief weigh in on that, and Chief and John.
Thank you, excited for it to open.
Okay, good. All right, Council, oh, Councilmember...
Norton.
Norton.
Still Norton. Hi, thanks for your presentation, it was very informative. You know, I was wondering, when, will you be using AstroTurf as part of the, as part of what you're doing there for the structure? Because we're implementing a citywide AstroTurf program, so I'm wondering if that would be a part of it.
It certainly could be, absolutely. We're in the baby stages of design, and you've brought this to my attention, we will definitely look at that. It's a, it's a good water-saving device, and it takes less maintenance than grass. It's a good idea.
Oh, great, thanks.
Yeah.
All right, Councilmember Sepadossa.
Yeah, thank you so much for the presentation, and it was great spending time with you and getting to know you on this trip. I just wanted to share that when we saw the structure at Donghe, it was really heartwarming, and everything we saw was just exciting. So it was, it's good to visualize what we're going to have here, and see it in person, and acknowledge and recognize that when they do come to visit, that there's also the same structure here in Federal Way, I think is a great camaraderie between the two cities. So, thank you so much, and I look forward to the completion of this project.
Thank you, we all do, yes.
All right. Thank you very much for your presentation, very much appreciate it. Thank you so much. It's going to be a great project. Okay, now, we've got Item 6, Council Committee and Regional Committee reports. Parks, Recreation, Human Services, and Public Safety Committee, Councilmember Walsh.
All right, the committee met a week ago today, and out of that came Items E and F on the consent agenda. And I would also just like to comment that this isn't really Parks, Recreation, Human Services, or Public Safety, but it does have something to do with recreation and a few other things, and the betterment of the city is, go EM Tongi. The next American Idol.
Thank you. Land Use Transportation Committee, Councilor Doby.
Thank you, Mayor. Our next meeting, if you're planning ahead, is on June 5th at 4:00 PM. And I did like the public comment, because this could fall under land use and transportation. There's a fellow, Tom Turner, who's had a business in Federal Way for a long time, and he always advocates on 5:70 at 5:30 in the morning, that you have cruising in your city, because there's a lot of people that bring in money to drive their cars through. So I like what Mr. Blevins talked about, having a cruising area maybe sometime. And again, we do have a parade that's gone for 60 years at Marine Hills, so that would be one everybody should come out and start the parade cheer.
Very good, thank you very much. Finance, Economic Development, Regional Affairs Committee, Councilmember Tran.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Our meeting is going to meet next Tuesday here at 5:00 PM. Councilmember Doby will be facilitating the meeting, and I will be calling from the airport. Sorry I didn't tell you that, they just changed my flight schedule, so sorry, Steve. Thank you, Mayor.
All right, thank you very much. Lodging Tax Advisory Committee, Councilmember Sepadossa.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. We met last week, yeah, last Wednesday, I think. And the committee reviewed for applications for tech grant, it's the Elite Productions for Northern Classics and Competition, Miss Washington Volunteer, Harmony Kings for Evergreen District Chorus and Quartet Contest, and the Pacific Raceways. So we had quite an interesting conversation about these grants, and so the recommendation from the committee is now going to come to Parks Recreation, Human Services, and then on to Council for approval. So these are programs and events that attract people to Federal Way, and according to the grant applications, a lot of them even bring people nationally. So it's really exciting to put Federal Way on the, on the map in this, in this way. And particularly, Pacific Raceways, one of the things they said they would do is, when the raceway is happening, that Federal Way is going to be on their screen, you know, advertising. So, you know, it's something that people could see and hear about Federal Way, that we're not Seattle, but it's a city that is really prominent and really centered on opportunities. So it's a great opportunity for us to have the advertisement without paying for it, per se. I know next meeting is going to be Wednesday, June 14th at 10 o'clock. And can I talk about RIA9? So another committee that I, a meeting that I was at, was the RIA9. And just wanted to share the highlight for that, of that was the visit to the Downey Farmstead Habitat Restoration Project in Kent. And so there's a lot of projects around the watershed that are happening in our region, and a lot of money's going into it, but it's just for restoration and upgrading and doing a lot of, doing work just to restore the habitat and the watershed, and salmon recovery, and a lot of things that are happening in our region. So that is also a really exciting thing that's happening in our region. And some of it may not happen in Federal Way, but at least we know that things are being protected here in South King County. So that's my report, and thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Deputy Mayor?
Thank you. I'd like to talk a little bit about the Senior Resource Fair. It was about a year in the making, and the senior commission meets once a month, and they have been working on this in between meetings and during every meeting. I'd like to thank the commission members themselves, the staff at the PAC, because the PAC was very accommodating to us and worked out perfectly, the vendors. And as Commissioner Debbie Harvey said, we had, I think, nine or 10 vendors that we could not fit into the facility this year, and they're on a list for next year. I'd like to thank Amy Gladden, she's our council staff, and she did an amazing amount of work on this. And it really would not have been as successful without her work that she did. And I'd like to thank all the people who attended. We didn't know how many people to expect, we bought 300 of these bags, which the Steel Lake Presbyterian Church graciously purchased for us and sponsored. And anyway, it was a wonderful event. We have heard nothing but good comments about it, and are already talking about what we could do better next year as a commission, and looking forward to planning it for next year. So it will become an annual event. Today I attended the skateboard meeting, and we had a discussion on safety on metro buses, and what they're doing to promote safety in the, in the region. Some of the programs that they're doing have not come down south yet, but they will because they're pilot programs now, but they're up north, such as having ambassadors at transit stations and having alternatives for the big buses. So that, we will eventually get some of this stuff down here. For instance, in Burian, they have terminal support teams, so if you have any questions, in Burian and Aurora, there are behavior health peers that are there to help, and terminal ambassadors in the Seattle stations, and those are pilot programs, which, if they work out well, they will be coming to most of the other transit stations. They talked about fair enforcement reform, and that is something that, so during the pandemic, they, Metro did not enforce necessarily if you got on a bus and didn't pay. But they are now looking at that and how they're going to be working to make sure people are paying as they get on buses. They also talked about the new grants that are coming out, and I'm sure that our staff has had those, but if they haven't, I do have the PowerPoints that I can forward to you. PSRC was there to talk about infrastructure information and grants. And the big news is the Metro Fall 2023 service changes. And I believe there's one route in Federal Way, the 190, that will be impacted here in Federal Way. This week I will be attending the King County Regional Transit Committee and the King County Board of Health Meeting. And, you know, Mayor, I would, the gentleman, Mr. Armstrong, who talked about the inhumane treatment of geese, this is not the first time. And I've done some research over the last couple of years, I am hoping that the city does not promote or support this treatment, because there are other ways that we can control geese.
Yeah, we're not a party to that.
Not to the Twin Lakes, but we do have parks and we do have lakes. And so I would be interested in working on some kind of an ordinance that encourages the humane treatment of geese and wildlife. And there are other ways to control, to control geese. I know that they can cause some issues, but I also know that gassing the geese and as you put them, as they are captured and put into the container that gases them, sometimes their necks are broken, their wings are broken, and it's just truly inhumane and not necessary to do that. So perhaps we can work with policy staff and create an ordinance. I have a lot of information from MRSC that I've gathered over the last few months, or 12 months about it. So also, EM is in the top three. He did go back to Hawaii for his home visit because he actually did grow up there, so we'll give that to him. And he mentioned Federal Way. It would be awesome if there is someplace in Federal Way that we could have a viewing of the show on Sunday. I don't know where that could be. You know, it's 8:00 our time, but if you're going to vote, and we need everybody to vote to make sure he is American Idol, you have to vote at 5:00, between 5:00 and 6:30 or something. So you have to vote before the show comes on. So anyway, he's a student educator, let's support him, let's make sure he wins this, takes the number one prize, and maybe we can all get together and watch him.
We're going to do, we've got it on our social media, and we've also have it on the entry...
I appreciate that.
...sign for EM. So it may be a little, what are we at, Tuesday right now?
It's Tuesday.
Yeah, so, I don't know, let me think about it.
Okay, that would be great, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Council President?
Being last, I'm sort of the catch-all, so I'll just talk about things we haven't talked about yet. I did promise the Kiwanis Group that we would be promoting, Deputy Mayor and I, because we're both in Kiwanis, the 67th Annual Kiwanis Salmon Bake, which will be Friday, July 28th, at Steel Lake Park, from 4:00 to 8:00 PM. The tickets are at $28 for adults, and it's less, I believe, for seniors. But we have tickets if you want to buy some, but at any rate, please put it on your calendar, it's the best salmon you'll ever eat. And it's a good way for our community to come together, and all of that money goes to scholarships for the kids. I am concerned about people whose cars are being stolen, there's some ideas that are out there. Like, for example, I didn't know this, Dara, but you can actually get an AirTag for your vehicle that's available at the Apple Store. Also, if you put a club on the steering wheel, it's a little harder for them to steal your car. So that's at least some ideas. Not much help after it's already happened. One thing I am concerned about, Mayor, is we're hearing about sex predators that are being released from McNeil Island. And in particular, in Enamclaw, there's a house in Enamclaw that is going to be housing, or is housing right now, a predator who preyed on 500 children, 500, a violent sex predator who, they said that he was not, could not be rehabilitated. And that community is now going to raise funds to sue what's happening. But I think we need to be aware of that, that's going on in the state, it's all over the state. And I'm not sure what's going on in our community, but I do know that in the past, they've tried to release a violent sex predator to a house east of the freeway. It didn't happen, that was a few years ago. So I think we need to be aware of that. Thank you very much. And I'm wondering, Mayor, do you have anything to say about the Nyberg's report?
Yeah, recall if you will, that we had the detailed presentation from the police chief, I believe, two meetings ago. Chief, do you have a brief statement on this that you could provide?
Yes, I can, Mayor. If it's okay with you, I'll come up to the podium.
Would you please? Recall if you will, we had a presentation at the city council meeting several meetings ago, where we had an independent investigation. I'll have the chief get into the details.
All right, thank you, Mayor. Thank you for giving me an opportunity to provide a report on the Nyberg's reporting crime data. Over a year ago, a city received an unsigned document that alleged serious misconduct at the highest levels of city government. In the interest of transparency... In the interest of transparency, the city hired a third-party attorney to investigate the matter, which determined the fraud allegation to be unfounded. The investigation also determined that police officers within the Federal Way Police Department are not intentionally manipulating Nyberg's crime data and that the stats are within the regional norm. This investigation took six months to complete and cost the city in excess of $51,000. Although some mistakes can be made, we will not scrutinize every possible detail and pursue perfecting an imperfect data system. There are 50 states with different laws that can make reporting challenging. We will do our best to follow the rules in the spirit of Nyberg's, but our time and energy is better spent chasing more significant issues to keep our community safe. The police officers and the professional staff at the Federal Way Police Department are people of integrity with an outstanding reputation who would never intentionally betray the public's trust by manipulating crime data. I wholeheartedly trust in the work our people are do, are doing every single day. The citizens of Federal Way are served by a competent police force duly credited at the state and the national levels that meet the highest standards in professional policing. Public safety does not exist to serve numbers. Federal Way Police Department's mission is to put resources on the street to help people, to prevent and respond to crime. We will not invest more, more into Nyberg's, a volunteer program that will take police officers off the streets and reduce neighborhood patrols, which does nothing to make our community safer. As your police chief, the police department will continue to do, do its best to report Nyberg's crime data correctly with the resources, constraints and priorities to keep our community safe and secure. No further action will be taken with Nyberg's as far as I am concerned, and I consider this matter closed. Thank you.
Chief, thank you very much. I, I just wonder, you know, we've had so many questions about the Nyberg's numbers. Do, do we have to do that? I mean, what is prompting us to even do that?
Well, you want, you want to share with the community what the crime numbers are. This is a voluntary program. Nationwide, 60% of law enforcement agencies participate in Nyberg's, a national incident-based reporting system. We believe as a credit agency, it's best practice to participate in Nyberg's, to share. So the FBI at the national level, they can see crime trends. We can also see it in our Federal Way community. But it is a volunteer program. If the mayor and council decided today, Chief, please don't participate in Nyberg's, there would be no consequences.
Well, we're going to continue.
Absolutely.
It's, it's critical that we do, and we're going to do our best to do it. Councilor Walsh, I see you've got your light on. Okay. All right. Thank you, Chief.
Okay, thank you.
All right. All right. Thank you. Did you have anything else, Council President?
No.
Okay, great. All right. All right. We're on to item number seven, the consent agenda. These items have gone through committee and been passed all at once, but I will read them and ask if a council member wants an item pulled for separate consideration. So item 7A, minutes for the May 2, 2023 regular and special meeting minutes. B, limited license agreement with the city of Kent. C, resolution setting a public hearing date for the 2024 to 29 Transportation Improvement Program for June 20, 2023. D, Pacific Highway South non-motorized corridor phase one authorization of bid. E, Washington Auto Theft Prevention Authority, 2023 to 2025 auto theft program grant on behalf of Puget Sound Auto Theft Task Force. Item F, McDonald, Hiller HVAC Maintenance Agreement Amendment Number Two. Council, is there, are there any items that you would want pulled for separate consideration? Seeing none, Council President Coachmar, do you have a motion with respect to A through F?
I move approval of items A through F.
Second.
Second.
But a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Matters passed unanimously. Thank you. Item eight, public hearings. Item A, amendments to the City Comprehensive Plan and Parks Recreation Open Space Plan, PROS Plan. I will now open the public hearing regarding amendments to the City Comprehensive Plan, Parks Recreation Open Space Plan, referred to as PROS. First, we will hear a staff report from senior planner Evan Lewis, followed by council discussion and public comment. City action on, uh, council action on this item will occur at Agenda Item 10 later in the meeting under ordinances. Evan?
Give me one second. I'm not seeing, I'm not seeing the PowerPoint immediately, so. Great. Good evening, Mayor Farrell, Deputy Mayor Honda, Council President Coachmar, council members Seva Dawson, Dovi, Norton, Tran, Walsh, and members of the public. Before you is an amendment or a proposed amendment to the Federal Way Comprehensive Plan, specifically Chapter Six of the Comprehensive Plan, as well as the Parks Rec and Open Space Plan, which is incorporated by reference as part of the Comprehensive Plan. The policy question is whether city council should approve amendments to the Federal Way Comprehensive Plan, Capital Facilities Chapter, and the PROS Plan to facilitate establishment of a park impact fee. The objective is to update the Parks Capital Improvement Plan since most of, the most recent Parks CIP update was in 2019 as part of the PROS update, to identify Parks capital projects that are eligible for a park impact fee, since that's a distinction that's currently lacking in the Parks Capital Improvement List. And also to bring the Capital Facilities Chapter up to date in other ways, such as updating a statement about the PROS Plan to reflect its existence in, in the PROS Plan or to reflect the existence of, of the park impact fee in the PROS Plan, as well as the Capital Facilities Chapter, and to correct a few outdated references that are in the Capital Facilities Chapter. The amendment before you contains two main updates. One is an updated capital projects list for parks and identification of Parks impact fee eligibility by project. There are other text updates that reflect the existence of a park impact fee once it's adopted and just to bring the, the Parks section of the Capital Facilities Chapter up to date. This agenda item pertains only to the Comprehensive Plan Amendment. The next agenda item pertains to the code amendment related to the park impact fee, the adoption of a park impact fee chapter of the zoning code. So there were two changes that were made to this ordinance after the FedRAC meeting on April 25th. And I just want to highlight those. So one was an update to the eligibility percentage, the park impact fee eligibility percentage. And that was because of some changes in assumptions that were made in the rate, the rate study that is associated with the code amendment, the next agenda item. The other was one specific removal of a statement in the PROS Plan. I think it's on page 112 of the, of the PROS Plan in your packet. Removal of the statement that mitigation fees must be spent within the park planning area where the proposed development is located. And that was removed to be consistent with assumptions that are included in the rate study since, since it was based on an assumption of, of the park impact fee being able to be used citywide. So the procedure for this comp plan amendment is slightly different from other comp plan amendments that have come before council. Council's probably used to annual comp plan amendments as part of the annual docketing process. However, there's one exception to that, which is you can amend the Capital Facilities Chapter specifically when it is done concurrent with a, with a mid-year budget amendment. And that is what, that is the plan for, for this particular ordinance. So that's why you're, we're able to bring more than one comp plan amendment before council since it is to the, the Capital Facilities Chapter as part of a budget concurrent with a budget amendment. So the SEPA Determination of Non-significance was issued on March 31st. This went to FedRAC on April 25th. It's before you now. And, and we anticipate if, if it's forwarded on, it would, it would be ready for adoption at the June 6th meeting. So there was one public comment on, on the comp plan amendment, and that was from Tacoma Water. It was a fairly boilerplate comment that is actually more applicable for any site-specific projects in the future. So it was just kind of a standard comment that it looks like they, they might submit to a lot of cities on, on ordinances like this. But that's included in your packet. So the staff report in the packet speaks to consistency with all three of the criteria for amending the Comprehensive Plan. And the recommendation is adoption. So I'm going to hand it over to the FCS group, who will speak specifically to the rate study on the park impact fee.
Thank you, Evan, and thank you, Mayor and Council. I'm John Gilarducci. I'm pleased to be joined tonight by Zek Hazel, who is a project consultant with our firm, who did the numbers and analysis. And in a moment, Zek will summarize those calculations. But first, I'll go through a little bit of impact fee background to set the stage for that. First, what is an impact fee? These are the one-time fees paid at the time of development by new development. They're intended to represent a proportionate share of the facilities that will serve growth. And so they need to be related to new development. We follow the law very carefully in the RCW. One of the provisions is that the impact fees cannot be the sole provider of funding for these facilities. So we have to strike a balance between impact fees and other funding sources. We'll show you a very broad funding plan that is the result of this provision in a later slide. When a developer provides a park as a condition of development, we have to give credit for that donation against the impact fee for the value of the improvements that they provide. That is assuming that those improvements are over and above what that development needs to serve just the development. So they are of system benefit. There are also provisions in the statute that you have to spend impact fee proceeds only in conformance with the Capital Facilities Plan element of the Comprehensive Plan. And that's what this section is about, updating that Capital Facilities Plan element so that you have a valid basis for an impact fee. Once impact fees are collected, an agency has 10 years to spend that money or it can be required to refund them. So this is a summary of the math. It's pretty straightforward. The most important piece is that center part of the equation. Picture a long list of planned capital projects. The growth-related portion of each project is the impact fee eligible portion. We divide that by the growth that it will serve, and that gives us our, what we're calling the future facilities component. In this case, there is a small surplus of existing parks capacity, and that forms the basis of the existing facilities component. Zek will show you how that's derived in a moment. Again, we divide that by the growth that it will serve. Together, they equal the total impact fee.
Okay, so in terms of reviewing the impact fee calculation, we're going to start with the denominator of the impact fee. At the top here, you can see that we're expecting a total growth of 22,774 residential equivalents. That's the denominator of the impact fee calculation. And a residential equivalent is just a combination of the residential population expected to arrive in Federal Way, as well as the employees adjusted for their demand on the park system that are expected to arrive between now and 2044. Of course, employees have a lesser demand on the park system than a new resident. And so we make that adjustment to the number of employees to get residential equivalent employees, which you can see in the third row here. And then residential employees plus the population gives us the residential equivalents on the bottom. And that is how we calculate a total growth of 22,774 residential equivalents. And by the way, these numbers are based on PSRC estimates. So next up, we're going to start talking about the future facilities component of the impact fee. And we're going to start by looking at the level of service calculations that go into one-half of that fee. So the, the future facilities component of the impact fee has two components. It has an expansion component and an infill component. The expansion component is related to adding new acres, trail miles, or special use facilities, brand-new facilities to the park system. The infill project list, that is based on adding amenities to existing parks or upgrading them or updating, updating them in some way. So starting again with the expansion list, we're going to develop a level of service calculation that gives us an eligibility percentage. So I'll walk through this really quickly. We're going to use parks and natural areas an example here. We are looking at level of service in terms of three metrics, parks and natural areas, special use facilities, and trails. And I'm just going to show you parks and natural areas as an example, and all three work the same way when we're determining level of service. So first, in 2023, we have a quantity of 1,031 acres of parks and natural areas. In terms of our population, that works out to be a level of service of 10.16 acres per 1,000 residents. That's our current level of service. Over the course of the plan, we're expecting to add seven acres of parks and natural areas. So looking at our future level of service, after we've added those parks, in 2044, that level of service will drop to 9.04 acres per 1,000 residents. That's the future level of service target that was created by the, the capital project list. If we took that level of service, 9.04 acres per 1,000 residents, and we applied it to today's population, we would need to have at least 918 acres of parks and natural areas today to meet that level of service target. And of course, as you can see above, we already have over 1,000 acres, so we are already meeting that level of service target, which means that any park projects that are added by the project list will be 100% eligible. They are not needed for existing users of the system. They are needed for future users of the system. Therefore, they can be 100% included in the future facilities component of the impact fee. Also, because our level of service is dropping to 9.04 acres per, per 1,000 residents, we actually have an excess of parks and natural areas today. We have 113 extra acres that are available for future growth. So that will be included in the existing facilities component of the impact fee. So all that's to say is that for those projects on the expansion list, which add, which add acres, they are 100% eligible for inclusion in the future facilities component. We have those two projects here, the downtown park expansion and the South Light Rail Station Park, for a total eligible cost of 16.5 million. That was the expansion list. We also have an infill list, which, as I mentioned, this is a much longer list. I'll just page through it here. Included for completeness, but definitely not for your review right now. These projects add amenities to your existing park system. Then it's not adding a quantifiable number of acres or trail miles. It's just improving the amenities on your existing parks in some way. And we assume that these amenities will be shared proportionally between existing and future users. That's where you see this eligibility percent of 18.05% that you see on some of these projects. That represents growth's share of the future population. That's their proportionate share of those projects. Some of these projects have 0% eligibility. Those are included for completeness sake, but they, they basically replace failing assets or otherwise repair the park system, not really improving it in any way. And so they get 0% eligibility. The total eligible cost of the infill list, as you can see at the bottom right here, is 6.3 million. So in summary, here's the future facilities cost basis for the future facilities impact fee. 22.8 million, as you can see at the bottom right here. That's the combination of the expansion list and the infill list. Much more briefly, here is the existing facilities cost basis calculation. This looks at what you already have in your park system and how much of it is available for growth today. And we used a method where we first calculated what the historical city investment per unit was between 1991 and today by acres, trail miles, and special use facilities. And then we applied that to the eligible number of units. So using parks and natural areas as an example, per acre, just shy of 23,000 has been spent historically on those parks and natural areas. We have 113 eligible acres. So 22, or 23,000 times 113 gives us the unadjusted eligible amount of 2.56 million. That is what's available for growth that you've already, you've already built and have ready. Once you add that to the special use facilities, we have a total of 3.4 million, you can see at the bottom here in the middle. However, some of these projects were built using debt. And we, new users will be paying for that debt in their property taxes, so we don't want to double collect for, for that. So in this section here, 2.4 million, you'll see, that is growth's share of the outstanding principal on your parks-related debt. So taking 3.4 million minus 2.4 million, we give a total eligible cost of just over 1 million for the existing facilities component of the impact fee. And here is a full summary of everything I just discussed. The full cost basis, that's future plus existing, is 23 point. future plus existing, is 23.9 million. When you divide that by the growth in residential equivalents, you get a total parks' impact fee per residential equivalent of $1,048. Now, you're not actually applying this to new developments using a residential equivalent estimate, just straight like that. Instead, we provide an estimate of how many residential equivalents will be added by these new developments. So first, the first line you see here is the dwelling unit. You see there are 2.71 residential equivalents expected for that. That is based on the average occupancy of any dwelling unit in the Federal Way. So 2.71 times 1,048 gives a parks' impact fee of $2,800 per dwelling unit. Employees, we've estimated to be about, they have the same impact of about .05, or sorry. Yeah, employees have the same impact as about .05 residents, or in other words, 20 employees equals the impact of one resident. So they get a much lower charge of $55 per employee. You will not be applying that by employee, though. We can do it in a much simpler way with this schedule here. So what you'll see here on the left is a list of different commercial land uses. We got their industry code. And then we have estimates of the number of employees per 1,000 square feet you see in this column here. So per 1,000 square feet, how many employees are these land uses going to add? And that is how we end up charging the PIF. We apply that $55 times the expected employees per 1,000 square feet to get a PIF per 1,000 square feet, which you see on the far right here.
So I mentioned the funding plan as a requirement of statute. This is a summary, which essentially serves as a reminder that of that $60.8 million in total planned projects, only a portion of it is impact fee eligible, and the remainder has to be funded using other sources. And then finally, we'll close with a table of comparisons, a caution that everybody's systems and level of service targets are different, but this is a handful of similar PIFs, single-family residences in the region, and you see where the proposed charge would fall for the city of Federal Way for a typical single-family residence.
All right. Evan, do you have something before I have?
I just wanted to note one thing. Regarding the PIF amounts in that table, there are aspects of that, there are aspects of that that will speak to in much greater depth, a depth associated with the ordinance, the next agenda item. And there are aspects of the employee PIF specifically that are addressed in the ordinance, which is the next agenda item. So there will be a chance to unpack that table either now or as part of the next agenda item or both.
All right, Council, any questions at the stage? Councilor Doby?
Yeah, I was just going to comment. So what we just saw was the process and the way that you come up with the numbers and the dollars. And then later on, and as we go through the rest of the presentations and we vote on, that's when we'll actually decide, is it really 2,800, or is it 1,000, or is it 55?
So that part is even not tonight.
But I mean, the start of it.
The start of it, but the ordinance at Federac next week will speak to the actual fee schedule, and then that will be voted on on June 6.
So this is just the start to get things rolling so we can be in sync with the state law with the budget that we're going to be doing.
Yes, and it's updating our capital projects list, so that can be factored into the park impact fee. The actual amount will be set later.
Thank you.
Okay, Councilor Wolf.
And this is, and those numbers were the, would be the maximum allowable park impact fee.
Correct. So those are the max. Council can set as low as it wants.
Counsel, any other questions?
Yes.
Councilor Norton?
So when would this come into effect? So for projects that are already permitted and ground is already broken, they're not going to be paying this? It's not retroactive, then?
So this is addressed specifically in the actual code amendment, but just to preview that, there is a vesting provision that would vest to the PIF at the time of complete application as opposed to at the time of building permit. There's also a provision specific to, and this is in the code amendment, specific to the commercial impact fee that would include its existence, essentially would adopt the ability to charge a commercial impact fee, but the code amendment would set that at zero until 2030.
Okay.
So factors like that, that kind of delays and flexibility is addressed in the code amendment.
Okay, because I just did the math. I mean, I worked in, I owned a construction business for 12 years, and I saw that, you know, if I was building a 250-unit apartment complex, that would be $750,000 in additional fees. And to me, that sounds like something that would make me not want to build as a developer in this city, and we need that for our infrastructure. We need it for our, you know, and then charging people by the employee. It just seems like it's adding to the cost. We've already got so many fees, and, you know, King County is just known for being really expensive to build. I mean, just an average single-family home has $250,000 of fees and, you know, taxes. So that's just my question is, as someone who worked in that business, and I see how expensive it is to already create a building, do you think that this is going to have an impact on future development here, or is that they're just going to absorb it and move on?
Any impact fee could potentially have an impact on development, but that concern, as well as many others, sound consistent with some of the discussion that was at the May 1 LUTC meeting. And so in the next agenda item, I will actually speak to every single issue that was raised at that LUTC meeting, and it's all addressed in the next code amendment.
Thank you.
So, yep.
All right, great. Counsel, any other questions on this? All right, and Stephanie, do we have any public comment on this?
No, Mayor, I don't have anyone signed up.
All right. Councilor Doby, do you have a motion?
Yeah, I'd like to move that we close the public hearing.
Is there a second?
Okay.
But a motion and a second, is there any discussion on closing the public hearing? All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? All right, the public hearing is now closed. Item B, Park Impact Fee Zoning Code Amendment. I will now open the public hearing regarding the Parks Impact Fee Zoning Code Amendment. First, we'll hear a staff report from Senior Planner Evan Lewis and Deputy Parks Director Jason Gerwin, followed by council discussion and public comment. Council action on this item will occur on Agenda Item 10 under ordinances. Evan?
All right. Good evening again, Mayor Farrell, council members, and members of the public. We're here for the hearing. Before you is a code amendment to implement a park impact fee in the city of Federal Way. The policy question is whether the city should authorize the implementation of a park impact fee. And the objective is, the objective is to adopt a park impact fee chapter of Federal Way Revised Code Title 19. This is Federal Way's zoning code, so it would be a new chapter of the zoning code specifically to help fund parks' projects that are necessary to serve and mitigate impacts from future growth. And we are anticipating significant growth, and we are planning for significant growth over the next 20 years, specifically 11,000 new housing units, 20,000 jobs, which results in an estimated more than 20,000 more residents, and that will increase demands and impacts on our existing park system. So the process, the ACIPA Determination of Nonsignificance was issued on February 24th. Planning Commission Public Hearing was held on April 5th, LUTC on May 1st. Tonight is both the first read and a second public hearing on this code amendment, and it may be forwarded on to the June 6 meeting for second read and adoption. So I'll hand it off in a moment to Parks to provide more background, and also the FCS group to provide more details on the new chapter. But first, I need to recap some further considerations about the park impact fee ordinance and updates that were made to the ordinance since the May 1 LUTC meeting. These changes and considerations were made based on discussions and comments about the park impact fee at the LUTC meeting. So the first is regarding the commercial PIF, Park Impact Fee, the council member Norton you were asking about earlier, and that was also discussed at the LUTC meeting. And the issue is whether or not to even have a commercial park impact fee. The ordinance before you and the associated rate study still show a commercial park impact fee category. However, to address concerns that were raised about impacts on businesses, issues of predictability for businesses, the ordinance specifies that the commercial park impact fee would be set at $0 until the year 2030. And as a reminder, the maximum park impact fee amounts that are reflected in the rate study are just that. They're maximums, and council can set that lower. Specifically, that lower amount is set in this ordinance. It specifies that it would be set at zero for the commercial park impact fee until, I think specifically, actually, December 31, 2029, so one day short of 2030. Council can discuss the pros and cons of these changes further, but to lay those out in some detail in terms of what was discussed and some of the considerations. On the one hand, retaining a commercial park impact fee in the rate study gives the city more options in the future. So if you don't adopt the existence of a park, of a commercial park impact fee, you're kind of, it's making it more difficult for the city to perhaps adopt one in the future. However, setting it at zero until 2030 does provide a level of predictability for commercial businesses, commercial development. On the other hand, there are some stakeholders who might still be concerned that the city's even adopting the existence of a commercial park impact fee category. And while for the city, setting it at zero until 2030, that could have an impact in terms of money that is collected for parks by a park impact fee, because you're limiting your options that are afforded to you. So the next consideration was the park impact fee by dwelling type. In the previous version of the rate study that was brought to the LUTC meeting, there were different maximum park impact fee amounts by dwelling unit type. There is one for multifamily, one for single, one for ADUs, accessory dwelling units. The rate study has been updated to show just one park impact fee category and one maximum park impact fee amount for all dwelling unit types, so one residential park impact fee. So to lay out the considerations on that that were discussed and thought through more by staff, on the one hand, this helps ensure more fairness and consistency across all housing types, so there are not overly broad assumptions being made about the impact of any given housing type. It's also possibly easier to understand and interpret, just having one park impact fee across all dwelling unit types. It's simple. On the other hand, by not calibrating and scaling a residential park impact fee by dwelling type means that we're not reflecting average impacts that may in fact exist by different dwelling, types of dwelling units. So on a larger scale, you can look at averages, average impacts of multifamily versus single-family versus ADUs, et cetera. So there are trade-offs in taking the simple approach, but there are many cities that do just have one residential park impact fee. There was some discussion about specific projects that were on the list, so we just did due diligence and double-checked the projects that were included in the capital projects list, and there were no changes made to that. There was a lot of discussion about the actual park impact fee amount, and while some LUTC discussion delved into the amount charged for residential, council will have a chance to discuss this more at next week's Federac meeting, and then again on June 6 as part of a completely separate fee schedule resolution that will come before city council. So a few more, and these get a bit denser. So I'm actually going to skip number five and come back to that, because it will make more sense in context to number six, which deals with the issue of vesting. The ordinance was updated so that projects would vest to the park impact fee at the time of complete application, not at the time of building permit issuance. So that is what's in the ordinance before you. That vesting at the time of complete application would last for two years. The park impact fee would be locked in for any building permits issued in that two-year period. And there's also an option for an applicant to request a one-year extension on that vesting, that being locked into the vesting at the time of complete application. And there's specific criteria in the ordinance that they would have to meet to be granted that one-year extension. Permits issued after that two-year period would be subject to the park impact fee in place at that time, or unless granted a one-year extension, they'd be, it'd be after that three-year period. So some considerations on this. And this, there was lots of discussion on this. There were also comments specifically requesting, requesting that the park impact fee be vested at the time of complete application. So on the one hand, this does keep within the theme of predictability, as applicants will have a better understanding at the time of their application is deemed complete of what the park impact fee will be, particularly for projects that are more complex, larger, that can take several months or even years to go through the land use approval process. On the other hand, by not vesting at the time of building permit issuance, it means that then if the park impact fee is raised within that two years, that that's less money coming in for the park system, because they're vested at a lower park impact fee rate. It's also not consistent with our other impact fees, so like our traffic impact fee, that, for that, applicants are subject to that at the time of building permit issuance, not at the time of complete application. So it does have a pro and con, and one of the cons being consistency with our other impact fees. So that brings us back to number five, which is, there was some discussion at LUTC about a park impact fee on-ramp, as it was called, where a certain number of initial units after the park impact fee is adopted would not be subject to the park impact fee. That stemmed from suggestions that have been made in public comments. The proposed ordinance before you stops short of setting some arbitrary number of permits that are exempt from the initial park impact fee after it's adopted. The underlying concern that was raised on this issue is really about predictability, and a good chunk of that predictability issue has been addressed by vesting at the time of complete application instead of the time of building permit issuance. To speak to some of the pros and cons of this issue, by not allowing an on-ramp, it ensures that any non-exempt development after the park impact fee is adopted is subject to the park impact fee, and thus, the city is capturing all of the park impact fee eligible dollars from non-exempt permits after the park impact fee is adopted. On the other hand, and this has been largely discussed, I think, at the 5-1 LUTC meeting, it is possible that recent applicants and pre-applicants, so those applicants that have maybe had pre-application meetings recently, haven't factored a potential park impact fee into their plans, into their financing. So that's also a consideration. All of those issues, council can discuss more if it would like. And then lastly, this is not really something that was discussed, I think, at LUTC, but there has been an exemption provision added in the exemption section of the ordinance so that any building permits that do not result in increased impacts on, impact on parks would be exempt. So there are a number of building permits that we require for things that have nothing to do with new dwelling units, like a new wireless facility, a deck, repairs on a building that don't add units. So this provision would exempt all of those building permits that don't increase an impact on parks. So on this ordinance, there were four written public comments. This is actually now six written public comments as of today. There were two that came in today, and I think those have all been provided to city council. There was another one from Intercorp, which had provided two previous comments. There was also one from Grand Peaks Properties that came in today as well, and I think that, at least they said they had sent that through the portal that should have gone to council. So the staff reports speak to consistency with all criteria for amending our development regulations, and the recommendation is adoption of this ordinance. So with that, I will hand it to Jason Gerwin, Deputy Parks Director.
Good evening, Mayor Farrell. Council, just want to give you a little bit of background, and know that the Parks Department has, since inception of the city, looked to implement a park impact fee. Essentially, the Parks Department is always looking for and on the hunt for money, and this is one way that we can start to get a dedicated funding source for the Parks Department. By no means does this address all of the budget problems the Parks Department has. As you looked at that infill list and project list, there's still $44 million in remaining projects and repairs and upgrades that need to be done. But what this is, is this is an incremental step for the city and the Parks Department to to have a dedicated funding source to offset the impacts of growth and give us that additional funding source that's less of a drain on the general fund. And with that, I'll turn it over to the FCS group to go into the methodology.
Before we get there, Councilmember Sethad Austin, I see your mark, your question on --
At some point, I do have a question, yes.
Do you want to ask it now?
Sure. I'm Evan, or actually anybody who's talking about. So this is based on the 22,774 number that PSRC projects to be the growth for Federalway, right?
Yeah, so the maximum park impact fee amounts that were shared in the previous agenda item, that factors in those growth projections for the future.
So since this data comes out in 2030, does that play any role, and what, how do we come, that's a projection, so when we do have the actual numbers, does that change the formula?
So it's, it's always going to be a projection, specifically that, that projection was based on Puteau Sound Regional Council, PSRC projections, and specifically, it's consistent with the same data sources that are being used throughout our comprehensive plan update. So in the future, when there, I mean, by 2030, I think we'll be moving into our next 10-year periodic update of the comprehensive plan, and so then the 2030 census may, may come into play then. But it's, yeah, so I don't know if I, did I answer your question? It's always going to be a estimate in the, in the future based on the best data that we have right now.
Right, and then when, when that census information comes, it could probably change.
Yeah, well, yes, and, and in the future, there would, there'd be, possibly be updates to the rate study and changes to the assumptions of the rate study. So this is, this is what's being brought forward right now, consistent with, with growth assumptions and our current capital projects list that would be updated, associated with the comp plan amendment.
All right, great, all right.
Thank you, Evan, thank you, Jason, thank you, mayor and council. I will quickly provide some background, will sound familiar on impact fees. I will go through the code update, the proposed code update, and then Zek will quickly summarize the, the numbers. So as a quick refresher, an impact fee is a one-time fee charged at the time of development to new development. It is intended to represent a proportionate share of the facilities needed to serve that new development or growth, so it needs to be reasonably related to new development. We follow the law very closely. One of the provisions in that law is that the impact fees show a balance between what's funded by impact fees and what's funded from other public sources. We also have to provide a credit in the case of a developer constructing a facility off the list or providing that, that project, they get credit against the impact fee in that case. We also have accounting rules, we have to earmark and, and account for impact fees in a separate fund, and spend the money in conformance with the capital facilities plan element of the comprehensive plan, so it has to be linked to that list of projects in the capital facilities plan element. There's a 10-year limit on spending, once impact fees are collected, 10 years to spend them on eligible projects. So this is a summary of the math, that center box is the most important, that's where the big, the larger numbers are. Picture a list of planned projects, the growth-related portion of each project is the piece that's includeable in the impact fee. We divide that by the growth that it will serve to get that future facilities component. There's a small surplus in park system capacity right now for existing population, and that forms the basis of the existing facilities component, again, divided by the growth that it will serve, together they equal the total maximum impact fee defensible. So now, quickly, what you see in the proposed code is a title, a purpose and intent section, findings and authority, which essentially reference the PIF study, name the rate study as the PIF study, provide a long list of definition, of definitions of key terms. The park impact fee methodology, the summary, a summary of the approach is provided in this section, it also refers to the PIF study for a more detailed explanation of the methodology. The park impact fee applicability section really has to do with who has to pay and when in the process, and that's defined in that section. There's a provision to allow for independent fee calculations when a, the PIF schedule doesn't fit a particular land use. The exemptions section exempts things like residential redevelopment, where you're replacing an existing structure, there's no charge for that, so those exemptions are laid out in that section. I talked about credits, when a developer, a development provides a, a park of benefit to the park system, it's a project that was on the list, they get credit against the impact fee for that, for that park. Establishment of park impact fee accounts, I mentioned that is to earmark impact fees for spending on impact fee eligible projects. The administrative guidelines authorizes the directors to develop internal guidelines. I talked about the refunds, in which PIFs can be required to be refunded if they're not spent on eligible projects within 10 years. The use of park impact fees specifies that they be spent on growth-related facilities, consistent with the statute. There's a provision that allows for administrative fees to recover the costs of administering the impact fee program in that administrative fees section. There is a process for appeals in the case of a, of a development believing that they were improperly charged a PIF. And then that final section, and that is a summary of the code.
So before I get into the detailed numbers, here is again a reminder of how the impact fee is laid out. We have the existing facilities component related to the eligible cost of capacity that you already have, and its availability to future users, and there's a future facilities component, which is the projects that need to be built to accommodate growth. Both of those cost buckets divided by the growth and system demand gives us their, their respective fees, and then the total of those is the total parks impact fee. So first off, looking at the denominator of the calculation, the system, the growth and system demand, once again, this is based on PSRC's estimates of growth in employees and residential population. We are looking at a total growth of 22,774 residential equivalents. We do make an adjustment to the number of employees to approximate the use of their system, which is much less than the typical resident. So the population plus the residential equivalent employees gives us the residential equivalents you see at the bottom here, and between 2023 and 2044, we're expecting a growth of 22,774 residential equivalents. That's the denominator of the impact fee calculation. Next up, we're going to start talking about the future facilities component of the parks impact fee. The future facility component is made up of the project list that is going to be, serve growth through 2044. We've divided that project list into two sublists, we have the expansion list and the infill list. We'll talk about the expansion list first, that is related to park projects that add quantifiable number of park acres or trail miles to the park system or special use facilities. We are going to use a level of service calculation to get the eligibility for projects on the expansion list. So I'm going to walk through this, this will probably sound familiar, we're going to talk about the level of service for parks or natural areas as an example, and this applies for all three categories of measurement. So in 2023, there are 1,031 acres available in the park system, per 1,000 residents, that equals 10.16 acres. By the end of the planning period in 2044, we expect to add seven acres of parks and natural areas. That means that in 2044, the level of service will be 9.04 acres per 1,000 residents, which is a slight drop in the level of service. If you took that level of service, 9.04, and you applied it to today's population, you would need to have 918 acres already built today to meet that level of service target. Now, of course, since you already have 1,000, or over 1,000 acres ready, that means that you have more than enough to accommodate your existing users, and any additional park acres added by the project list will go to serve growth. And that means that 100% of those expansion projects can be included in the future facilities component of the impact fee. Not only that, but because the minimum quantity there, 918, is less than the current quantity, 1,031, that means that we have a reimbursable quantity of 113 acres, those are acres already built available for future users. So as I just mentioned, the projects in the expansion list are 100% eligible. There are two projects, the downtown park expansion, the south light rail station park, they have a total cost of 16.5 million, which of course, if they're 100% eligible, means that there are 16.5 million dollars of eligible expansion list costs. Next up is the infill list, which is a list of all projects that add amenities, or modify amenities would be a better way to put it, on your existing park system. It's a long list. The total cost of that infill list is 44.23 million. The eligibility of projects on this list, there's basically two eligibilities, it's 0%, if those projects don't really improve the park system in any way, they just replace a failing asset or in some way. And then there's those projects that provide new amenities or improved amenities that will benefit both existing and future users. So those get the growth share eligibility that you see here of 18.05%, that's growth's proportionate share of those projects, assuming that existing and future users will use those amenities equally. So multiplying the total cost by the eligibility percentages for each project, we get a total eligible cost of 6.3 million for the infill list. Summarizing here for the future facilities component of the impact fee, we have 16.5 million dollars of eligible costs for the expansion projects, you can see right here, and 6.3 million dollars of eligible costs for the infill projects, that's a total of 22.8 million dollars of eligible costs for the future facilities cost basis. Much more briefly, here is the existing facilities cost basis, this is the eligible cost of park projects that you already have built. So first what we did is we took the historical investment that the city's made in its parks, natural areas, special use facilities and trails, and we calculated an investment per unit that you see here. So I'm going to use parks and natural areas as an example. Per unit, the city has spent 22, almost 23,000 dollars per acre. We have 113 eligible acres per that level of service calculation that we just talked about, and that times that equals a total eligible amount of 2.26 million dollars for those parks and natural areas. Following that same logic for the special use facilities and adding those two together, we have a total eligible cost of 3.4 million for the existing facilities. We do have to make one adjustment, some of these parks projects were funded by, by debt, and future users will be paying for that debt in their property taxes, so we don't want to double charge them for that. So growth share of the outstanding principal is 2.4 million, so 3.4 million minus 2.4 million gives us the total eligible amount that you see in the bottom right of 1 million. Okay, adding the future facilities component with the existing facilities component gives us a total cost basis of 23.9 million for the, for the parks impact fee, divided by the growth and residential equivalents of 22,774, that is equal to a parks impact fee per residential equivalent of 1,048 dollars. When you apply that to new developments in the city, you're going to sort them into either residential or non-residential uses. Residential uses, we've combined all dwelling unit types into one, their average occupancy, according to census data, is 2.71 residential equivalents per dwelling unit. 1,048 times 2.71 is 2,800 there, you see there, that's the parks impact fee per residential dwelling unit. Employees have an impact of equal to 5/100ths of a resident, in other words, it takes 20 employees to equal the impact of one resident, so they get a charge of just 55 dollars per employee. However, if you were to charge a commercial impact fee for parks, you would not apply it per account of employees, you would instead apply it using a estimate of the number of employees per 1,000 square feet. We have a variety of commercial land uses listed here with their employees per 1,000 square feet listed in this column, multiplied by that 55 dollar calculation on the previous slide, that gives you the total parks impact fee per 1,000 square feet on the far right here.
So a final reminder that the impact fee will not fund all the projects on the list, the 36.9 million you see there will have to come from other funding sources in order to get the list executed, and that's if the full impact fee were adopted. A selection of comparable impact fees, park impact fees in the region, again, these differ greatly in the level of service provided and different conditions in each of these communities, but, but just to give you a selection of other charges in the region.
All right, Councilmember Norton.
Thank you, thank you for your presentation, I just had a question. So when we've received large sums of money in the city, since I've been on the city council, I've noticed that things happen where even though it's supposed to be allocated toward certain things, people like Tim Johnson would come and say, oh, well, we're going to change the color of the money, and you know, it's supposed to go to the community, but let's go put it in this fund, and then we can just use it for whatever we want. So is this going to be something that could possibly happen, this money could just disappear and not be used for parks?
So these are required to be accounted for in a separate park impact fee fund where you can see --
I understand that. Can, can it, can we change the color of the money with this and use it for some other project?
Not legally.
Okay, okay, thank you.
All right, Councilmember Sethad Austin.
Yeah, and correct me if I'm wrong, but the two presentations and the numbers I was comparing look very, very similar, if not the same?
They're the same.
Okay, so why did we have the same and two, I'm confused right now?
Part of it was a formality, since, since both were actually relevant to the, the ordinance, the first being the comprehensive plan amendment, the second one being the code amendment, so, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
If each was brought forward individually, it would have required that, that same content.
Got it, okay, appreciate it.
Sorry about that.
Councilmember W, do you have a question?
I was just going to move to close the public hearing, if it's time.
All right, any, before that, any other questions? All right, Councilmember W, go.
Mayor.
I'm sorry.
Public comment.
Ah, sorry, that's right, is there any?
I don't have anyone signed up, Mary.
I, no, I don't, no, let me just make sure that, okay, you don't have anything, nobody signed up for this? This is item 8B, the list I have doesn't have any.
No one, mayor.
All right, anybody here want, want to testify on this? Okay, now, Councilmember W.
Oh, I move to close the public hearing.
Second.
But a motion, a second, is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Matter passed unanimously, we're going to take a seven-minute break, we will reconvene right now, it is 9:19, why don't we just call it 9:20, we will reconvene sharp at 9:27. I have hit the clock. Nope, I'm going to reconvene at 9:27.
My friend Marine Bernardi, in for emergency search division, preparation and recovery.
I've got, so we got about, let's get everybody assembled up here. I've got my seven-minute timer went off. Let's see here. Well, let's go ahead and get back started. So we voted on that, now we're on item C. So we are on, now I need my glasses, item C, Housing Action Plan Implementation Code Amendments. I will now open the public hearing regarding the housing plan, Housing Action Plan Implementation Code Amendments. First, we'll hear a staff report from the Community Development Director, Keith Niven, followed by council discussion and public comment. Council action on this item will occur on agenda 10 during ordinances. Keith?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, Council President Kochmar, Deputy Mayor Honda, and City Council members. Keith Niven, Community Development Director. There we go. Okay, sorry. So the policy question this evening is, should the city council adopt various amendments to Title 19 of the Federal Way Revised Code that are responsive to the study conducted by Heartland LLC as part of implementation of the city's housing action plan? So, Heartland made nine recommendations, and those are listed on the left hand of this slide, and the reason why there's both green and red, unless you're colorblind and then you're just seeing one color, which I found out this weekend, that the red ones mean that we're not making code changes, and the green ones mean we are. So expanding the multifamily tax exemption to the B.C. zone, we're not including an amendment to the code this evening because that takes a different process, and we've got that queued up and it's going to come to you later next month. Reduce the amount of ground floor non-residential space that is required, that is contained in this proposed ordinance this evening. Increase building height within 100 feet of single family for the B.C. zone. Staff and the administration did not agree with that recommendation. We felt like it needed a lot more analysis before a code amendment was brought forward, and so that's not included. Number four, reduce the parking requirement for the B.C. zone. We also did not include a proposed amendment for that because the code already allows for an applicant to provide a parking study, which allows for the reduction of parking. Number five, make consistent the open space requirement and allow for a fee in lieu of option. We did not include that in this ordinance. That is also the subject of a separate code amendment that will be coming forward to the Planning Commission in June and then on to LUTC after that. Number six, allow stormwater to be placed in vaults within the B.C. zone. Right now, that takes request of the Public Works Department, and that is a change to the development standards and not city code, so that will be handled through a different tool. Number seven, provide predictability for school impact fees. That is contained in this proposed amendment. Number eight, remove the city's inclusionary requirement. We are proposing amendments to the inclusionary requirement, but not to remove it, and we'll talk about that at length. And then number nine, remove the restrictions on building form. So we do have some code amendments for that one. Based on taking this through LUTC and twice, there were a number of public comments, school district, property owners, developers, primarily focusing on the school impact fees and the inclusionary requirements are kind of what we had to respond to with this latest version of the ordinance that's in front of the council this evening. So we first went to Land Use and Transportation Committee in April. We went back in May, and then since the May LUTC, we really kind of worked through the different comments regarding both the school impact fees and the inclusionary piece, and I'll talk about those in more detail when we get to those slides. We're hoping to approve this ordinance in June, which would then allow us to provide the adopted ordinance to the Department of Commerce to complete our grant requirements for hiring Heartland. So, ground floor retail. Heartland's recommendation was to reduce the amount of retail/commercial space required on the ground floor, and to clarify the wording, part of this is if you require too much non-residential space on the ground floor, if there's not a market to support that, that space ends up being just empty space with for lease signs on it, which does not add to the vibrancy and kind of the character that the city is after. So I ended up, for me, like, there needs to be a picture, and so for this, for the B.C. and the city center frame zones, what it used to say in code was along the primary vehicle accessway, so let's call this street here on the bottom, the primary vehicle accessway. It said that anything that paralleled that needed to have 60% of its ground floor non-residential space. So that would be this building, and that would be this building, and then along the secondary street, which is this one going up and down on the slide, you needed to have an additional 40% of the ground floor space as non-residential. And so, you know, what we heard from Heartland is that was too much, we heard from developers that that was too much, and so the proposal is to just change it to any building along the primary frontage having a 40% ground floor of non-residential space, and that would have to be retail or commercial, open to the public. For the city center core, we took a little bit different tact, and right now the code says that the entire ground floor plate needs to be non-residential. And again, responding to both the critique from Heartland, but also talking with the developer we're working with on TC3, One Trent, also talking to a developer that's looking at the old, old Azteca site, we really, we went from 100 down to 25%, and now we've refined it in the ordinance in front of you to 15%. We think that for now, through this initial step for us as a city, that 15% represents a good mix of non-residential to residential space on the ground floor. As we develop and intensify our uses, that number might want to, we might want to revisit that in, you know, five to 10 years and maybe push it up to higher as we get more pedestrians and bicyclists kind of using our street network. Next is school impact fee predictability. All right, so there's really kind of four things that we've talked about, you know, and as we heard from the representative from the school district who I think left, that one of the things that they were looking for was for there to be maybe a larger charge for apartments that were generating more students than one per door. You know, so basically what we've talked about, what I've heard us and what's included in the draft ordinance this evening, is that for studio one and two-bedroom units, so the smaller units in our city center and our B.C. zones, that are really, I think the vision is for them to be more kind of transit-oriented, kind of residential units, probably having a much smaller student generation rate. Those school impact fee would be basically set at zero in code. And then for larger units within the city center and B.C. zones, so three bedrooms plus, and in other zones within the city, that we would set a cap at $3,604 for a single family and $2222 for multifamily. And as you heard this evening from the representative from the school district, these caps, this proposed cap has gone down from an earlier version of the ordinance, and one of the reasons why is Councilmember Walsh asked a question at an LUTC meeting, you know, did the averages include the years where we had the kind of out-of-balance school impact fees, the fees that were over $15,000 a door? And the answer was yes, and I think as we thought about that, we thought about, should those years be actually included in the average, or should we kind of take them out? And I think we concluded that it would be more representative of school impact fees that were being charged in other places to take them out, which then drove the caps down to these numbers, which you see, which are included in the ordinance this evening. Another thing that was asked for by the district and eventually worked its way into the ordinance is to allow for those caps to be increased to account for inflation, and right now, what's proposed in the ordinance is to allow for either 5% or engineering news record for the Seattle area to account for inflation, whichever is lower, starting in the year 2025. And we talked about, similar to park impact fees, you know, one of the things that was asked, or that caused us to go down this road in the first place, was to improve the predictability of these school impact fees. And so, as was mentioned with the park impact fees, there was a suggestion of an on-ramp where there would be a certain number of projects in the city that would be considered already in process, even though they haven't submitted applications yet, and a suggestion of 1,000 units that could basically not have to worry about park impact fees. And so, we, I think we understood the issue that the permitting process can take a number of years, and that affects the predictability piece. And so what we talked about was allowing them, again, to not have those school impact fees paid at issuance of building permit, well, to be set at issuance of building permit. They would still be paid at that time, but it would be set at time of complete land use application, and then would be set for two years with the ability to extend that for a year. So we felt like that was responsive to that kind of concern that it takes a long time to get through the permitting system, and if there was a way to set them upfront, that would be, that would, I think, resonate with the development community. The last thing we talked about was the inclusionary requirement. So right now, the inclusionary requirement, the affordable housing piece within the city code does not provide incentive for the developer within the B.C. and the city center core and frame zones because it doesn't allow for a density bonus. The other zone, the RM zone in the city, does allow for a density bonus, so this is not applicable there, and that, Heartland really didn't look at the RM zones, they just really looked at the city center core and frame and the B.C. zones. So we looked at this and thought about it and suggested that we remove the parking requirement for these affordable units. Again, we believe that there's adequate parking in our existing standards now, and to allow for these units to be, to not have to have parking associated with them would allow for at least a slight decrease in overall cost for the developer, and that was the suggestion and what is contained in the current ordinance. You know, as we talked about this, if you look at some numbers, so this is an example of how this works. If there was a 300-unit apartment project, should use the word project instead of building, it could be multiple buildings, the inclusionary requirement per Federal Way Revised Code 19110010 is 5%, so 5% of 300, so that's 15 units. Two-bedroom, and assuming that market rate is about 80% AMI, area median income, that would be $2,082 a month for each two-bedroom unit that we would call market. The inclusionary units would be at 50% AMI. A two-bedroom at 50% AMI is $1,302 per month. So there's a delta of $780 per month, per unit, which equals $11,700 per month. So there's a delta of $780 per month, per unit, which equals $11,700 per month for the project. You times that by 12 months, that's $140,000 a year, and our code says that those inclusionary units need to be affordable for the life of the project, so you assume 50, which is what's in the RCW, and that works out to be a cost of $7 million. Now that's a little bit eye-opening, and you know, in, as we're trying to make Federal Way more competitive as a development destination, you know, we also have to balance out some other things. Some of those are the fact that we need to provide housing at all income bands, and this is really our only tool that we have besides the multifamily tax exemption, to try and get affordable housing, especially in kind of a mixed-use setting, a mixed-income setting, so these units get kind of sprinkled in with the market units in those buildings, and there's a value to having them be somewhat kind of dispersed, as opposed to kind of consolidating them in affordable housing projects like Uptown Square or Park 16. So, with that, same criteria for development agreement, or development regulation amendments, as we talked about with the park impact fees, planning commission, recommended approval, mayor's recommendation is approved, set the hearing, which we had this evening. So with that, I am going to be done.
All right. Counsel, any questions? Councilmember Dovey.
Just a couple of clarifications. The school impact fees, as I remember, what date does, is that start in 2025? That's not next year? What was the?
So you would start, so, so the way that this reads is, the zeros start like as soon as we adopt the ordinance.
Right.
The caps are set, but they don't start escalating until 2025.
So, by doing this, we're setting a impact fee in Federal Way, which has been zero for a while now, a year, and it will go to 2,200 for a multifamily that's not in one of these zones?
It doesn't have to.
We still have the.
You still, you have the ability to keep it at zero for as long as the council wants to do so.
Right.
When the council decides it doesn't want to do so, it would be capped at these numbers that are in code.
Okay, so I guess what I'm saying is, the message is, we're not putting school impact fees on anything by doing this, we are just saying this is where we could go when we decide to do it.
The analogy is, you're setting how high the ball can bounce when it finally bounces.
Yeah, and right now, it's not bouncing.
It is sitting on the ground.
Okay, thank you. I guess, I wasn't going to bring it up, but I got to bring it up. Your last slide on the inclusion, that a developer has to pay for 50% of AMI, at 50 years, it's $7 million that comes out of their pocket, out of their bottom-line profits.
So that's, so again, I think, I, yes, I, what I would say is this, the way that developers do things are, you know, they'll take out a construction loan to build the project, this comes out of their operating profit, so it's a different, it's kind of a different pocket? It still comes out of their pocket.
It's still, it's still walking around, buddy.
It is.
So, if we wanted to, I mean, are we, we don't have to go 50 years, we don't, I mean, we, we have some flexibility at looking at that, correct?
So, there's, I, I think there's some different choices the council can consider if they want to do something with this particular code requirement, which has been in place since 1997, if I didn't say that already, I'm going to keep saying that.
I understand, it's, it's, it's been a code for a long time, but Kent and Auburn and nobody else charges it like this, and, I don't know, it just seems like this is our opportunity to feel, I mean, we have to provide housing, I'm not, you know, I just gave out the proclamation, right?
You did.
So, I get that, but on the other hand, we have to balance between the, you know, what we need to do for our citizens, and the developer who's risking their money to build the 300 units or the 200 units, and, you know, that's their kid's inheritance, maybe, and so we need to think about that and be a little bit more compassionate, I think, to the developer.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Sephardoson?
Yes, thank you so much for the presentation, and I think I'm going to be talking about the same thing, and I want to see it there, because I think it'll be unjust, I guess, if we remove that, that provision for inclusionary requirement, so. I meant, over the course of 50 years, I know it's, it's huge, but that's 50 years, and I won't even be around. And, but that's, yeah, I, I think it's very important that it stays there, otherwise, then people who do need the housing would not have it, and you made a really key statement just now, that we're trying to cluster people in different regions and areas of our community, rather than making it all encompassing, and people of different socioeconomic, living in the same area, so that provision is going to, again, exclude people. So, I would like to see it left in it.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Walsh?
Keith, thank you. First, a quick question. On the headline up there at the top, you have example of exclusionary requirement, down below, you have inclusionary requirement.
Sorry. It's inclusionary, thank you for that. Upon my part.
All right, so with the inclusionary, and this is kind of what the, what the other Jack just was addressing, you know, you know, it's currently for the lifetime of the project, which interprets as 50 years. I mean, what are the pros and cons of setting it for 20 years or something like that instead of 50 years?
So we'll need to look into that. Right now, there's RCW definitions that lend itself to the 50 years. Whether there's some flexibility there, I think we need to talk about that with the city attorney's office, so we can explore that, you know, and see if there's the ability for us locally to go somewhere other than 50 years. Willing to look through that, yes.
And, and also, you know, as Jack also said, alluded to, other cities are not using the inclusionary requirement, or are there any other cities in the area that do have it?
There are definitely cities in King County that do. Most of them are not on the South Side.
Okay, are they on the East Side?
They are on the East Side.
On the East Side, and so, okay, I mean, the, the East Side is?
So the Arch cities, and, and the Arch cities are, I think there were, can't remember how many there are at this point, I think there's 12, but I'm doing that from memory. So, so that is definitely something that Arch has kind of facilitated over the years, getting those cities to adopt an inclusionary program, so Skip is just, I think, behind that. You know, at some point, the other South King County cities will get there, we're just out in front.
Yeah, I mean, I, I like the idea of the lower income being intermixed, I definitely like that idea. Also, I mean, hey, if the other, if the East Side cities, Saturday night, I, with my company, with my business, we donated our services to a, to, okay, it wasn't for the South End, it was for the East Side, for a outfit that does low-income housing there, because I want to see a lot of low-income housing on the East Side, rather than here in Federal Way, so anyway, so I figured that, hey, promote it up there. But, but anyway, it seems to me as though the East Side has done a pretty good job of preventing things like Park 16 and things of that nature, so, so anyway. So it makes sense, I mean, my, my question is just, if it were a shorter length, you know, 20 years instead of 50 years, would that be an incentive for, or would 50 years be a greater disincentive for the developer than what 20 years would be?
Yes. I mean, at the end of the day, they look at all of their costs, over time, somebody runs a pro forma on the operational side of things, you know, they weigh that against the forecast for where rents are going to go, where incomes are going to go, so all of that is part of a modeling system that most developers do.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Council President Kochmar.
Mayor, I move to extend the meeting past the 10:00 p.m. timeframe.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's been a motion, a second to move past 10:00 p.m. time. Is there any pursuant to our council rule? Is there any discussion?
Yes, I believe we created a council rule that we're not going to go past 11:00 p.m. Did we not do that earlier this year? No, I thought we, we agreed maybe that we would not go past 11:00.
Right, but we still have 10.
Yes, I understand 10, but I, yeah.
I do not believe that 11 is a hard stop.
It is not.
It'll be, it'll be up to the council to decide just how far we go. In the future, I think that we need to be more mindful of setting these number of items on one council agenda, it just, you know.
Right now, would it be wise for us to take a look and see if any of the council items, after this?
Correct.
Any council items?
There's a, there's a motion on the, before the floor, and is there any discussion pertinent to the, to the, to that discussion?
I think that we should end the meeting at 10 o'clock.
Okay, so, that's one count, that's one item of discussion? All right, any other discussion items on this? All right, there's been a motion and a second to continue past 10:00 p.m., is there any, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Stephanie?
Councilmember Sephardoson?
Aye.
Councilmember Norton?
Nay.
Councilmember Tran?
Aye.
Councilmember Walsh?
Aye.
Councilmember Dovey?
Nay.
Deputy Mayor Honda?
Aye.
Council President Kochmar?
Aye.
Motion carries 6-1.
All right, Steve Groom, where's Steve Groom?
He's right there.
Steve Groom, what do we have? Yes?
We're committed to doing the budget amendment at this point.
Okay, then let's move forward, that's the only, well, actually, we've got the appointments, that won't take long, let's just, all right, Keith, were you done with your presentation?
Have we closed the hearing?
No, not yet.
Yeah, I'm done.
You finished with your presentation.
I'm absolutely done.
All right, counsel, do you have any questions of Keith?
No, I was going to ask, but I'm good.
No, go ahead, go ahead.
No, I'm good.
All right, are there any other questions from council? All right, is there any public comment?
We had Sally McLean sign up, but I don't believe she's here.
We already gave her a time for that.
And I guess, Mayor, I would just ask that we formally acknowledge that the statements she made in general comments will be part of the record for, for this hearing.
Yeah, I just did. All right, thank you very much. All right, and I think we made it clear when she did so, so, all right, but thank you for clarifying that. All right, so, do we have any public comment?
No, Mayor, nothing additional.
All right, all right. Councilmember Dovey?
I move to close the public hearing.
Second.
There's, there's been a motion, a second, is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Matters unanimous. Item D, 2023-24 biennial budget amendment. I will now open the public hearing regarding the 2023-24 biennial budget adjustment. First of all, our staff report from Finance Director Steve Groom followed counsel, followed council discussion and public comment. Council action on this item will occur under Item 10 under ordinances. Steve?
Thanks, I don't have a reason to show any slides or tables or graphs. This is a routine budget amendment. When we adopted the budget, we forecasted the revenue as optimistically as we thought was, was, was wise, and then we adopted a budget that, that spent the highest priority expenses. This, this item is to do two things, it's to carry forward 22, the, the budget items in 2022 that were funded, things like $14 million worth of ARPA, we want to roll that forward into 2023 so that we don't goof up the current year's budget. Also, we want to greenlight the things that we think are reasonable, based on the performance of the first quarter. In the first quarter, our revenue came in about $1.3 million ahead of budget, that is wonderful, because we built a budget that we intend to be able to achieve. Our investment revenue came in $330,000 favorable, and that seems like I, I have a high degree of confidence that that will continue through the rest of the year, and then we also had favorable variances in permits and fees and in utility taxes.
Steve, did you prepare a PowerPoint for this presentation?
No, sir.
All right, just give.
I have one in case there's questions.
Okay, go ahead.
Yeah, this has been through FedRec, and so I'm not going to go through the detail.
All right.
I'm just giving honor to the process. So, based on the revenue, we, you have a list in your packet totaling $1.1 million, and that is things that were requested, we have a long list of waiting lists, we have a, we have waiting lists, 100 items long.
Do you have that list?
I do.
It's a public meeting, we're adding $1 million to the budget, we need to show that list on our, on our screen, please.
Sure, I can do that. This is the carryforward of the items from 2022, that the revenue was, the revenues were all realized in, in last year, we're going to carry that forward, and this is the revenue that came in that was better than budget. The investment revenue was $330,000, and that, we are certain, will continue throughout the rest of the year. If you add the other items that came in favorable to budget, we have a favorable budget variance of $1.3 million. So, we feel confident that we can greenlight $1.1 million. This is the list of items that staff, every department in the city, proposed items, and I have made a promise to you as a council and to all departments, anything that is requested, I will capture, I will not lose, all requests are important, but in prioritizing them, we have looked at four different things. Virtually all of these items score high on the four criteria we looked at. First off, they have to be must-dos, not nice-to-haves, not good-to-do's, not, they need to be necessities, not luxuries. The second thing is they have to be urgent, they either are past due or they're imminent. The third thing is these are existing obligations, we're not going to create new obligations if we can't take care of the obligations we already have. And then the fourth thing is, is we want to make sure that we, that there is no possibility of other funding sources. So this is the list that the city administrator, the mayor, all department heads, we had many meetings, and we, and we reviewed the entire list, poked at it. We still have a long list of unfunded issues, and the, the ones in the proposed amendment are the most important based on the revenue that we've got. So the takeaway, I want to make sure that everybody hears, and that would be the public as well, there's never any extra money, there's, whenever we have a favorable variance, whenever we have savings, there is a waiting list, and that's why we monitor monthly, that's why we come to FedRec, that's why we prepare a monthly financial report every month. So until we're current on our perpetual vehicle replacements and on our capital repairs, and then, and I'm also watching to make sure that we're going to be able to have a financed maintenance facility, that we can shoehorn into our budget in the future, we're going to continue to build that waiting list and work the waiting list. So the items in your packet, the items on this list represent the highest and best use of the revenue that has come in through the first quarter, we have processed all the staff recommendations across all departments, we have looked pretty hard at the whole waiting list, and these are the items that we're looking for your approval to move forward with. The next hearing will be next, council, I'm open for questions.
If the public wanted to see this list of the things that we're adding, where would they, would it be included in the packet online that they could see?
Exactly.
Okay, I just want to make sure that we're completely transparent about this.
Sure, sure, it was on, it was at FedRec, and it's on this, this one too.
Okay, council, any questions? Okay, thank you very much. So seeing no questions, do we have any public comment, Stephanie?
No, Mayor, I don't have anyone signed up or anyone's hand raised.
Councilwoman Tran, do you have a motion?
I move to close the public hearing.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's been a motion, a second to close the public hearing, is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, the hearing is closed. Item nine, council business, diversity commission appointments, Councilmember Walsh?
I move the following appointments to the diversity commission. Tracy Myers is voting member for a term to expire May 31, 2026. Lisa Wallace is a voting member for a term to expire May 31, 2026. Ron Walker as a voting member for a term to expire May 31, 2026. Chika Onya Jieka as an alternate member with a term through May 31, 2026.
Second.
All right, there's been a motion, a second, is there any discussion? All those in favor of the nominations?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? They pass unanimously, congratulations. Moving on, item B, youth commission appointment, Councilmember Walsh?
I move to appoint Satinder Singh Gruel to the youth commission for a term to expire August 31, 2024.
Is there a second?
Second.
Been a motion, a second, is there any discussion? Oh, Councilmember Sephardoson, I see your. All, Councilmember Sethad Hassan, I see your light.
Ready to vote.
All right, just getting ready. Oh, everybody's, everybody's lights are on, all right. Very good. All right, so I guess I'm the only one talking. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, congratulations. All right, item C, arts commission appointment. Councilmember Walsh?
I move to appoint Joseph Clark to the arts commission as a voting member for a term to expire December 31, 2026.
Second.
Second, there's been a motion, a second, is there any discussion? All, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, and, I was going to say, the deputy mayor jumped again, but anyway. Item 10, ordinances, first reading. Item A, Council Bill 848, ordinance, amendments to the City Comprehensive Plan and Parks Recreation Open Space Plan, Prose Plan. Staff report was presented earlier. Do we have any additional public comment on the budget? Stephanie, do you have anything listed?
On the budget or on the...
I'm sorry, on prose plan. I'm sorry, on the prose plan.
No, I do not have anyone signed up, no.
Is there anybody in the audience who'd like to speak in regard to the prose plan? Okay, would the city clerk please read the ordinance title?
Council Bill 848, ordinance, amendments to the City Comprehensive Plan and Parks Recreation Open Space Plan, Prose Plan. An ordinance of the City of Federal Way, Washington, amending the Parks Recreation Open Space Plan and the Federal Way Comprehensive Plan, Chapter 6, Capital Facilities, to incorporate two new future parks and to facilitate establishment of a park impact fee.
Councilmember Dovi?
Yes, I move to forward the proposed ordinance to the June 6, 2023 council meeting for second reading and enactment.
Second.
There's been a motion, a second, is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Matter passes unanimously, thank you. Item B, Council Bill 849, ordinance, park impact fee zoning code amendment. The staff report was presented during the public hearing earlier this evening. Do we have any additional public comment? Stephanie?
I do not have anyone signed up, Mayor.
Is there anybody in the audience who'd like to, would want to give additional public comment? All right, hearing none. Would the city clerk please read the ordinance title?
Council Bill 849, ordinance, park impact fee zoning code amendment, an ordinance of the City of Federal Way, Washington, relating to the establishment of a park impact fee, adding a new chapter 1992 to Title 19 of the Federal Way Revised Code, including sections 1992-010, 1992-020, 1992-030, 1992-040, 1992-050, 1992-060, 1992-070, 1992-080, 1992-090, 1992-100, 1992-110, 1992-120, 1992-130, 1992-140, 1992-150, and 1992-160.
Councilmember Dovi?
I move to forward the proposed ordinance to the June 6, 2023 council meeting for second reading and enactment.
Second.
There's been a motion, a second, is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Matter passes unanimously. Item C, Council Bill 850, ordinance, housing action plan implementation code amendments. We had the staff report during the public hearing earlier this evening. Stephanie, do we have any additional public comment?
I do not have anyone signed up, Mayor.
Is there anybody here in the audience that would want to provide additional public comment? Would the city clerk please read the ordinance title?
Council Bill 850, ordinance, housing action plan implementation code amendments, an ordinance of the City of Federal Way, Washington, relating to incorporating code amendments to the community business, B.C., city center core, C.C.-C, and city center frame, C.C.-F, zones to boost housing production, amending Federal Way Revised Code 1995-020, 1995-030, 1995-040, 1995-050, 1911-0010, 1922-0050, 1922-5070, and 1923-0060, adding new sections of Federal Way Revised Code 1995-045, 1995-047, and 1995-057, and repealing Federal Way Revised Code 1995-065.
Councilmember Dovi?
Yes, I move to forward the proposed ordinance to the June 6, 2023 council meeting for second reading and enactment.
Second.
There's been a motion, a second, is there any discussion?
Yes.
Councilmember Norton?
No, it was me.
Oh, Councilmember Sethad Hassan?
Yeah, so, so we had that conversation, especially about my question?
Yeah.
And I don't feel like we've addressed it, so is this one we're going to vote on?
This is, yes.
Okay.
Well, did you want to, did you want to address it? What do you...
Well, it was my, it was basically a question because I don't want to see that provision removed.
You want to see that provision removed, or you don't want it?
I do not want to see it removed.
Okay, so, Brian, were you going to say something?
It's in there right now.
Okay, let's clarify.
It's currently in the code, so maybe...
Can we clarify, what, what do you want, and what, Keith, can you come up to the podium? So, what are you hoping to accomplish?
So it says the provision for inclusionary housing to be removed, correct? And I don't want that to be removed. Or how, okay, explain it to me, maybe.
The ordinance that's in front of you includes only an amendment to the inclusionary provision to remove the required parking associated with it. It's not to change the percentage, or the AMI, or the tenure. I think what the two council members on the end have expressed is a desire to explore some other options before second reading.
Yeah, I just want to make it clear, I'm not for the way it's written, and I'm going to, you know, we're going to have to talk before this goes into ordinance, if it's 50 years, or is it 25, or does the city make up the other 25 years, or whatever it is. I mean, I want to move it forward so we can talk about it, but it's probably going to change, or we'll talk about it in two weeks.
Okay, a couple things. You're okay with that?
I'm okay with that.
Hey, council, you're okay with, potentially, if council votes for this, potential changes coming before final reading?
I would assume from my standpoint, I'm not going to vote on it the way it is at final reading unless we make some changes.
Perfect.
Keith, do you have, thank you, thank you, councilmember. Keith, would you have the opportunity to get that addressed prior to second reading in two weeks?
Yes, absolutely, we can get it done this week.
Brian?
Well, we need to know what we're going to change.
Okay.
So...
What does that explain?
That means that either, well, council can't decide outside of this meeting what the change is going to be.
That's correct.
So either, we need to have several alternates laid out, where they can vote on several options at the next meeting, or we need to discuss it now and decide what the change... We need direction.
Correct.
Next meeting, then?
Well, the next meeting will be on for second reading.
So, I guess my question for Mr. Niven would be, how difficult would it be to have several options available to vote?
I don't think there's that many options. In my mind, I think we're probably talking about three choices, and I think what it sounds like is we have to write three motions, one incorporating each of those three.
Okay.
And I think we can do that. It's a little complicated, I don't think we like to do that in second reading, but I think we could probably figure it out.
Yeah, it's not the preferred way to do it, but it's doable.
It is doable. Council, are you okay with pursuing this course?
I'm okay with that.
Me too.
Okay, I'm hearing consensus without, without potentially a vote. All right, council, are there any other questions about this issue? Keith, you've got direction?
Yes, sir.
You feel like you can come back?
Yeah.
Okay, let's do this. Council, obviously, the idea here is that we make sure that we comply with the Open Public Meetings Act. Once you get those options, would you please send them to council, be available to, you know, prior to the next meeting, be available to answer questions, obviously, as you always are. However, it's just critically important that people don't respond all and achieve in a public meeting outside the context of a public meeting. Deputy Mayor?
Mayor, I would just say, I know that you say this often, but...
Yeah.
Only a couple times since I've been on this council has that occurred.
That's correct.
And this council is very, very good about not replying all.
That's right.
So I don't want the public to even think that that's something that we do routinely.
That's right.
It just doesn't happen.
I actually, very much.
People are very careful.
Very much, absolutely. Thank you for noting that. Council President?
Thank you, I agree on the, we're very careful about responding.
Yes.
One other thing, I just want to know, before we make a decision, I want to know where we are. I've asked this before about our, our targets for housing, our housing targets. We have certain percentages for certain groups. I'd like to have maybe a little discussion on that at the next meeting, where we are with our different targets.
We could include that in the presentation.
Thanks.
Very good, okay, we'll do that. Okay, very good. All right, council, any other questions? All right, so, hold on. Where was I?
I believe there's one.
So we were on the discussion, there's been a motion, a second, and discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, passes on first reading unanimously. Item D, Council Bill 851, ordinance, 2023-24 biennial budget adjustment. The staff report presented during the public hearing earlier this evening, do we have any additional public comment, Stephanie, that's listed?
I do not have anyone signed up, Mayor.
Is there anyone in the audience who'd like to provide additional public comment? Okay, would the city clerk please read the ordinance title?
Council Bill 851, ordinance, 2023-24 biennial budget adjustment, an ordinance of the City of Federal Way, Washington, relating to amending the 2023-24 biennial budget.
Well, that was really fast. I'm like, and? Councilmember Tran?
I move to forward the proposed ordinance to the June 6, 2023 council meeting for second reading and enactment.
There's been a motion, a second, is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Matter passes unanimously. Steve, thank you very much for a thorough, but very brief. Again, we added, you know, $1.1 million to the, to the budget. It's available if anybody wants to see it online, and we always have copies of it, but thank you very much, Steve. And it's great to see that we actually had additional money to get things done, so thank you for the work you do. Okay, second reading and enactment. Item E, Council Bill 847, ordinance relating to misdemeanor possession of a controlled substance, adding new section 6.1.130 to Chapter 6.10 Federal Way Revised Code. Ryan, would you please update the council in regard to, I've sent an email out to council earlier this evening, but can you sort of, can you give...
Sure.
...a summary of what's going on, not only to the council, but to the public as well?
Do you want me to go to the podium, or do it from here?
Just do it where you're at.
Okay. So, earlier today, the both, the, the state legislature passed an amendment, a new law that fills the Blake hole that we talked about at the last hearing. So, what that is, is there was a decision called Blake that basically made enforcing the possession, the drug possession statute unconstitutional. For a few years, we had another state law that filled that gap, and they had until the end of the last session to, to pass a new law, and they failed to do that. That said, they met again just for the special purpose of passing a law on this topic at the request of the governor. They met, and they were able to reach a compromise that does cover this. So, under the new state law, it will be a gross misdemeanor with, so basically, a first offense, drug possession, will be punishable by up to 180 days in jail and $1,000 fine. Second and third offenses, up to the maximum of 364 days in jail and $1,000 fine. There are numerous treatment programs, there's a lot of money in the bill that, that funds a lot of treatment programs and wellness programs, but overall, it, it addresses the issue of drug possession. So, the short, I guess, version of why that's important for us tonight is that the law completely preempts the field of drug possession, and we do not have authority to pass a local ordinance now on this topic. So, the previously forwarded ordinance that we have on, tonight for second reading, is essentially moot now. If we were to pass it, it would instantly be incompatible with state law as soon as state law passed.
Do you have a recommendation?
So, my recommendation is to take no action on this thing.
Council President?
So, my question to you is, so at first and second and third, how are we going to know if they've had a, something happened in another city? How are we going to know if it's second or third? We don't track.
That's a good point, and that was a difficulty with the previous law, which only allowed us to enforce any criminal sanction if there was a first, we had to document a first and a second attempt to send them to treatment. This new law does, in fact, purport to establish a state tracking system that will let us track that.
Okay.
And they did appropriate some money for that purpose.
Every prosecutor, every, every court, every prosecutor, every defense attorney has access to what they call, what they call a DCH, a defendant's case history. So this requires there to be a prior conviction before you get those. What, what was impossible to track was the warnings.
Yeah.
Here, you know, when a prosecutor or a judge takes a look at a DCH, a defendant's case history, they'd see that. And you could see those, you can actually get into each case and look at the docket and see if a conviction occurred.
Okay, so Judge Larson wants to come to your next meeting at Parks and talk about the $500,000 he got from the state for treatment?
Yes, yes.
Okay, so put him on the agenda, yeah?
Yeah, we're planning to bring him on the agenda.
Okay, council, is there, pursuant to that information, is the council, is there consensus to take no action?
Right.
Or any objection? Okay, I'm sensing consensus, and based on the reaction or the statement from the city attorney. So therefore, no action is taken on that.